That sounds good.
All right, welcome everybody. Thank you for coming to tonight's meeting. If you'll take note, the emergency exits are behind us here to my right, then in the back of the room down the hallway and then to your left is another emergency exit. If you'll all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a moment of silence, please, for all of our service personnel and first responders. Thank you, if you'll be seated. The first item we have on the agenda under public hearing is Duchess Contracting Corporation. So, the way the public hearings work is... The way the public hearings work is you will approach the podium, say your name and your address, and feel free to comment on the project that is before us. Usually there's a time limit, but if you have plenty to say and it's relevant, you can take your time. And then each person will then do the same. No talking from the audience, speak to the board when you're at the podium, not anybody in the audience. We need to hear what you're saying. We're taking notes and we'll address your concerns before the end of the meeting. And if we can't, we'll certainly have an answer for you by the next meeting if we adjourn it. So at this time, I'd like to invite the applicant's representatives for Duchess Contracting Corporation to the podium. Yes, please, thank you.
Good evening.
We're gonna just make a motion.
I'll make a motion to open the, reopen the public hearing on Bishoff Lane.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Evening.
Brian Watts here from Dastakos Engineering on behalf of the applicant. So you want me to just give a quick brief overview?
Please.
It's been a little while.
Yes.
Mostly...
There's really no reason to... How many people are here regarding Duchess County? All right, yeah, there's quite a few people. So if you'd not make it brief, go through the application so that everybody's aware and refreshed as to where you're at.
I don't know if you have like a microphone or I can just point from here. So the applicant owns the properties which Bishoff Lane crosses. It's actually comprised of two separate parcels. The front. Parcel, parcel one right along Route 55, parcel two in the rear. Bishoff, Bishoff Lane crosses both of those parcels serving the adjoining property with a common driveway. The applicant is seeking to amend the lot line and in doing so provide a new right-of-way in the proximity location of the current Bishoff Lane with lots one in the front on either side of the proposed road and lot two up in the rear where we cut up to Dalton Farms. With that proposal, he's seeking to build two multifamily units. As provided on the bottom here, each one of these units will have 24 apartments for a total of 80 bedrooms. We are seeking to provide an extension to the Dalton Water, Dalton Farms Water and Sewer in the rear of the property up the hill. The exist, there's an existing pond. At that location, we'll be expanding to accommodate all the impervious. Providing some amenities in the rear of the front lot for both parcels to enjoy. This will be a town roads with utilities. With utilities brought up along this road and ending at either width of the parcel so that any future expansion can happen. We'll provide an easement off of the road.
Brian, yeah, could you expand upon that point? The possibility of expansion?
The, um, this parcel is in the Town Center District, I think we're calling it now?
It's the Town Center, yeah.
And we seek no variances, we meet all the zoning requirements. And part of that zoning district is that the adjacent parcels are also part of that district and they would gain access through this potential road which would go right up to the edge of the property. So if the adjacent parcels were developed, they would have access without any further curb cuts on Route 55. Part of the DOT improvements will include a left turn lane due to the potential traffic for the expansion of the Town Center area. He doesn't actually need it for the level, the level of development he's proposing, but he's going to install it anyway in anticipation that the future parcels will be developed. So stormwater. I know drainage is a big concern on here. So we are working with DOT on any improvements on Route 55. The drainage would be under their purview for those improvements. There's a separate traffic consultant who will actually design that and will incorporate that. We are proposing bio-retention in the rear of the first lot, in between the first building and those amenities. So that will provide for all kinds of treatment. We'll have closed storm sewer discharged into that area, hydrodynamic separator. We'll treat everything before we go into that new expanded pond. We will relocate the...
Brian, if I just may, so bio-retention is a new term that they use for catch basins. So he's gonna be treating the water that lands on the property and directing it towards what he refers to as a bio-retention pond. And if you'll just give them a little details about what the difference is between a catch basin and a bio-retention there.
Well, all the catch basin is just the, just the graded inlet structure to capture all the water and will be directed through a storm sewer system to the bio-retention area. The bio-retention is basically a large planting bed with an engineered media soil. So any runoff in water that we discharge there will have a chance to go through the soil, be treated for pollutants, infiltrate in the ground to the extent possible. A good example, it retains some water. If you were to pour water into a pot at home, it holds a certain amount of water before you see anything out the bottom. This is like a super mega scale. Anything that's above and beyond what that depressed bio-retention garden planting area can hold will have an outlet structure that collects it and discharges it to a hydrodynamic separator which takes the water and basically swirls it around. So further sediment come, falls out of suspension into the bottom. Oils and all kinds of, any oils and trash float up to the top and they can service that and get it all out of the water before it goes into the pond. The pond is the last step for this stormwater. It will be a small discharge outlet structure which has been correcting the, there's an existing 24-inch pipe which will be removed and reoriented to direct it around the existing houses and it will be just a 3-inch pipe for the small storms. And then we'll have a larger pipe for the larger storms. So it's a controlled discharge, so it doesn't just shoot out at the 24-inch pipe all at once. That's currently, it's currently what it does and it does cause a problem for the neighbors adjacent to us, so that has to be corrected. Currently, the site is, um, he's been under ownership for this property for close to 20 years, I believe, at this point. It was, had trees on it back, back at that time. They had been cleared back in around 2005-ish area when this, that pond went in. What's left now is meadow-type habitat, some scrub brush. When there are no significant trees in the front, the only trees left are in the rear of the property as you start going up the hill. We're gonna maintain those as much as we can. We're not anticipating too much in the way of cutting those trees beyond a little bit of cut for retaining wall and to extend the water utility. We're going to heavily plant around this pond. The bio-retention area will vegetate. None of those are tall, tall plants. And we will place a dense tree cover just beyond the wall where we have to cut to try and restore some of that beyond what was even there now. So beyond, some park benches and street parking for the Town Center, lighting that's appropriate for the neighborhood, 50-foot tall.
Brian, so this, this, I don't mean to interrupt you. We'll get back to the lighting. I don't want you to lose your train of thought, but these are the new plantings for the back of the property?
Yes, the whole, the whole site.
The whole site, okay.
Every, everything that's not being utilized for the building, the road, the refuge location, anything like that, we're gonna plant it.
So I remember from the last meeting, concerns about the view shed from Van Scoey to the property. Have you mitigated any of that, uh, view shed concerns yet or not at this point?
The trees, if we're still concerned, we can go back to the landscape that we've developed the plan and see if there's a taller tree maybe.
I was just thinking that maybe some of these were being planted. I remember Joe mentioning that he was gonna put some giant spruces back there. I don't know whether that happened in the plans currently or not.
Uh, double check.
Okay.
We haven't updated anything since the last mission to flank the plan until we get full feedback.
Sounds good.
But he, we don't want you to necessarily see this from the back of the houses. So we're gonna try to get as much as we can there that will grow in that soil. Can you do some view shed profiles?
We can.
Yeah, 'cause I think that was what was talked about some months ago. I think we were hopeful that we can include from, one of them gone from the, up DOT. So we would have like a, here's the lane, here's the, you know, so you can get an idea of where the widening is. So we're still waiting for DOT. I think everyone wants to see that as well as nice one big profile there. Currently, you, my understanding is you cannot really see the houses or the property for the current trees and most of them are staying. Most of them are actually not on our property.
Right. I did look, you know, from the properties there, got permission and went into some backyards. And if, if the, the trees are in bloom, you can't see the property. I have not had an opportunity to look during the winter, but...
It's definitely more visible, so some, some planes that year-round cover, foliage would...
You can't, you can't stop that anywhere though. You know, in the middle of the winter, you see...
We can try.
Yeah.
We can, we can try to offset it as best we can.
The evergreens may help, yeah. So is there more for your review at this point?
That's the general overview. I know it's been a little while since we've been before the town. If they have any additional comments.
Okay, thank you.
We've submitted the full EAF with the most current revisions to try and get everything on, on board in that end. We're still waiting for DOT and the consultant for this very specific design to coordinate. I submitted some mino correspondences that they have known. No more comments on the traffic impact study. They agree with all the items in there, including the left turn lane and the need for it.
Okay. After talking to Dan and reading some of his comments, I think that there are some things that he's still looking for. So what I'm gonna do before I read Mr. Reinhardt's letter, very well-written letter, Mr. Reinhardt. Sorry it took this long for me to read it into the minutes, but I will. Before I do that, Dan, if you would like to address any of the comments and then we'll open it up to the, to the public.
The big concerns you were mentioning, Brian, you know, obviously DOT is involved not just with the turning lane, but also with the mechanism for the outlet for the drainage. So we're just looking for some updates on that. We gave you a couple SWIP comments. There's some things, you know, some stuff in the new, newer storm, more stormwater design manual that we need to take a look at. The EAF, you took care of a lot of the comments in there. Just remember to go back to the Water, Waste Water Authority. They had a bunch of comments on the EAF that need to be incorporated in there as well. And, you know, the, uh, the status of the Water, Waste Water Authority connections, you know, have you made any progress? Have you been trying to make progress with them at this point?
Brian Stokoz has been, another gentleman from, from our office has been working on that. We are allocated 10,000 gallons per day.
Yep.
Originally, the project had 10,000 gallons. It was a much heavier scope than what it is now. It's been scaled back considerably and we're down to 8,800 gallons per day for the 80 bedrooms.
Now, could you talk a little bit about how that will affect 55 regarding other developments going forward? If this actually comes to fruition?
In terms of the water and sewer?
Yeah, will other...
Yes.
Yeah, if you could just talk about how water and sewer can... If this project is built and developed, how other...
I mean, I guess, Brian, if you don't mind, I'll just, I can just chime in real quick.
Thank you.
The, this applicant is proposing a mechanism that will allow for future extension of the water and tying into the pump station for the sewer. So along that corridor, there are gonna be opportunities for extension for, you know, development. Of course, we need capacity for the Water, Waste Water Authority for the water in the sewer. Mr. Churnes came in here and gave us a nice presentation on some of the things that they were gonna do with the treatment plant, the waste water treatment plant. So it sounds like there may be some potential for some additional capacity there in the future. And water right now is just limited because of storage, from what we understand. So it's, it's a start. And we, you know, it's, it's a start for the Town Center to be able to have some potential for utilities.
Right.
So right now, we're proposing a 12-inch water main.
Right.
Which is much greater than we would need just for this site. But that's in anticipation of this serving the entire corridor. And the pump station, which is at the adjacent to 55 alongside the, the proposed pond expansion is, everything would, that's kind of the low spot for the area coming from both directions, coming along 55. We will make that upgradable to the extent we can so that it can be enhanced as needed as the flows increase. And we'll be putting in, at this point, we think, two different force mains. A small one for just us and then transfer it to a much larger four, six-inch force main as development increases and we need that kind of capacity. But it'll already be in the ground, so you don't have to re-disturb it.
And for the public to understand, I mean, a lot of Baconites here who have, you know, been here for many decades, you know, the Colonel Beacon, Beekman, back in the 1600s, he leased land throughout this entire area to farmers. I always found it interesting that this town never had a Town Center or buildings that resemble other communities. And the reason for that is because the property was, was leased to farmers. And there really were absolutely no buildings whatsoever here up until the 60s. That's when it started to develop. Well, coming way forward to now, one of the biggest obstacles that we've had is the soils that are on that side of 55. Dan, what is the challenge there with, with well and septic? If you could just talk about...
There's a few, I mean, there's actually some contamination in some of the groundwater sources there.
Yeah.
For example, we, we do some treatment at TCP for our small public water supply system that's there. And the soils for, for septic systems are just not very suitable. Very heavy, high groundwater, which is why, say, if you look at the Dollar General development, they had to put in a humongous septic system for a pretty small amount of flow. So the soil is making a challenge. Central water, central sewer certainly would be, make for a much easier potential for development along the corridor.
And we're just talking about Town Center, that area where Four Corners is, not throughout our, you know, community. Town Center is confined to a very specific area that, that can be seen online. So what this applicant is, is doing is solving a significant issue if we, if we get to this point where he's breaking ground and building, where other smaller businesses will have access to water and sewer in that Town Center area. But now, haven't...
What you're saying is that it means that the vacant land between the pharmacy and Bishoff Lane at some point will have something to, they will then be able to be developed if they can tie into the water and sewer.
Which isn't gonna be cheap anyway.
Otherwise, it'll never happen.
Right. And, you know, it's, it's really access to clean water and proper septic treatment. But, you know, the concern right now, obviously, is the Dalton Farm Water and Sewer Treatment Plant is 40 years old, okay? We had Duchess County Water and Waste here and, you know, how these things line up are not predictable. The bond, I believe, this year has been satisfied from the original purchase of, of the Water and Waste Treatment Center by the people who are on Duchess County Water and Wastes under their purview. So it has nothing to do specifically with Dalton Farms. It has to do with the entire area. Anyway, the long and the short of it is that the idea of whether or not water is available, whether or not it's going to affect Dalton Farms, that, from what I understand, doesn't come into play because the current system has already been calculated to provide him with 10,000 gallons. And it should not affect the system at all, according to the engineers and their calculations. So with that being said, I'd like, Dan, unless you have anything else to say, or Craig, to open up for public comment. And I'll start with reading Mr. Reinhardt's letter. Yeah, okay. Now, this is dated January 16th, 2025, regarding Bishoff Lane. To whom it may concern, my name is Christopher Reinhardt. I live at 10 Bishoff Lane, Hopewell Junction, New York, 12533. There are three houses on Bishoff Lane which is unpaved, private dirt road. My wife and I bought our home in 1978 and since then, I have taken care of the maintenance of the entire road, which includes, among other things, grading the road, filling in potholes and clearing the snow. Shortly after Joe Sala purchased the property nearly 20 years ago, he had nearly all of the trees removed from the property and the ground was never properly graded. Ever since, the homes on Bishoff Lane have had to deal with water runoff from Joe Sala's cleared property, which floods into our yards and driveways if not properly diverted... I'm sorry, and driveways if not properly diverted. In the winter, the runoff turns my driveway into a skating rink. I had been personally diverting to the best of my ability the runoff from Joe Sala's property from the three homes on Bishoff Lane by cutting drainage trenches down Bishoff Lane for nearly 20 years and the problem is only getting worse. Before Joe Sala is permitted to build on the property that he all but abandoned nearly two decades ago, I ask that the Town Board require him to address the water issue by properly grading the property and installing proper drainage. To further compound the problem, the Town and Department of Transportation have not been maintaining the drainage culverts down Route 55 where it intersects with Bishoff Lane. The culvert running below the end of Bishoff Lane, parallel with Route 55, is routinely clogged with trash and debris, which causes water to flow down the sides of Route 55, overflowing the drainage ditch on the side of the road and wash over Bishoff Lane, which again is a private dirt road. I, along with the other homeowners on Bishoff Lane, are asking for the town's assistance in addressing the severe water problems that plague our road and which have only gotten worse since Joe Sala purchased the property across from Bishoff Lane. Sincerely, Christopher Reinhardt, 10 Bishoff Lane, Hopewell Junction, New York, 12533. Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, for preparing this letter. Dan, would you like to address any of this or I direct it to Brian?
I mean, what I can say is that the way that the development is laid out, you know, they're gonna be capturing all the runoff from all the impervious area, which is gonna stop a lot of the water that was running probably down this way now. But, you know, Brian could probably, you know, and has already mentioned about bio-retention areas, the catch basin systems. I mean, that's all part of the plan is to capture and treat the stormwater and get it safely away. So I think, I think it'll actually be a help in terms of certain properties that are now getting a lot of surface runoff that are coming down where the curbing and the, and the things that are gonna be part of the development, infrastructure are gonna actually take the water away from those areas, so.
So with that being said, did you wanna add anything else, Brian?
I mean, a lot of this site will be filled just due to the soils that are there. And in doing so, the new, the property will actually cut off any water from the south heading downhill is gonna get to our new fill. And we're providing a catch basin that's on our site, on a low spot, and directing it directly to the pond. So, and that catch basin is not gonna be the town's responsibility, it's gonna be our responsibility, that's on our property. So if we fail to maintain that, our houses, our building is gonna be flooded.
Understood.
So there's a little, there's some incentive there, I would say, on our side to, to maintain that. And again, we're gonna try to fix the pond runoff and the new grading, we can really...
How far into the drug, the road does your, are you going to go in? How far are you gonna blacktop into Bishoff Lane? Approximately.
We're gonna blacktop basically just past the existing pond. Afterwards, we will provide an easement down to the existing dirt road because the existing driveway where the individual homes actually connect is off-site. So we won't be able to, to access that or maintain that or make any improvements there. We are gonna provide right in the corner of our property, another catch basin to get the water out and underneath that driveway when you come down a little bit.
So...
To try to keep anything from impounding.
Thank you for that. Craig, out of curiosity, you know, we, we talk a lot about road maintenance agreements for private roads and the maintenance of them become the responsibility of the properties that, that utilize the road. Since the town, it's, the road isn't dedicated to town, it's not a town road. They maintain them themselves. How will that work out here, out of curiosity? So, uh, your tenants will be using that road? Right? And Mr. Reinhardt has been taking care of it for 20 years. I don't, can you do it for another 20 years, Mr. Reinhardt?
I hope so.
I don't, me too, I do too. Uh, so I, I'm just wondering how this all comes into play here.
There's a couple of things going on. I'll jump in if you don't mind. Um, first of all, the town road part is there's going to be town road and town catch basin infrastructure. And then that's going to go over towards, you know, the, uh, the stormwater. The onsite stuff that they have, this is all related to a stormwater pollution prevention plan. And nowadays, with development now, whenever there's a SWIP involved and there's permanent stormwater management practices, we have to have maintenance and easement agreements in place where if they default on it, you know, say the, the, uh, say the town, if it's inclined to, or other parties, normally it's going to be the town, can go in there and actually clean the catch basins or maintain the pond or whatever, and then levy it back against the taxes on the property.
Okay.
So it doesn't cost a taxpayer anything. It will eventually get levied by them. So if they fail to do the maintenance they're supposed to, there is mechanism now legally to be able to go ahead and remedy that problem.
So what is Mr. Reinhardt going to do for the next 20 years?
He's going to relax.
He's going to relax?
Hopefully.
All right. So a, at this time, I'd like to, uh, offer the podium to anybody in the, in the audience who would like to comment, ask questions of us. Uh, we'll answer them if we can, we can. If not, we'll, we'll wait towards the end of the meeting and we'll address each of them. But nobody will go unanswered tonight. So who would like to be first regarding this project? Anyone? Mr. Crane?
Bunch of, bunch of coffee lines.
Standing up, uh, Bill Crane, 254 Gardner Hollow Road. The, uh, a lot of the students are graduating right now. And they will be taking what's called the Phoebic oath. That's around the country, they take the Phoebic oath with, which includes the, the pledge to leave the town not only better, but more beautiful than it was before. Uh, are, is there some plan that, we're talking here so far about development and the, the plant, the, the applicant is even, wants to facilitate development, development next to him. That's part of what he's up to. And, um, I understand that the town comprehensive plan, which wants us to have a beautiful town, wants us to preserve the rural character, the trees all help provide the beauty of, of this town. Um, and wants, it recommends, like other towns, to have development in the town center concentrated in there and preserve the open areas at the same time. So that's true. But this, to me, is a beautiful meadow. It's a beautiful piece of town that nature is doing what she can to preserve um, uh, the wildlife and to filter the water. Uh, it's, it's a lovely spot and it adds to the rural character of the town. I, I would hate to just see facilitate development down there without wondering, how is it going to look? Is it going to look beautiful? Or what are we going to have? Are we going to have more, more of the way it looks now with these cars lots and, and, and buildings? Uh, what, what's, I'd hate to see you go forward without some overall plan as to what, what the town center is going to look like. Um, we don't want development for the sake of development. We don't want concrete and blacktop for the sake of concrete and blacktop. Um, there's a few concerns. First of all, preserving the trees, I want to thank the developer for, for trying to do that. Um, and he said he's going to preserve most of the trees and he, and they are going to prevent erosion the best way we can right now. You can't substitute new trees. They, you bring in big ones, they don't, as, um, Rob said, but in another context, it's hard for them to keep living. You bring in little ones that can't hold the soil like the big, the one, big ones you have now. And they, they, they've had for the, they help the adjacent neighbors up the hill and they'll help preserve, keep the water runoff. Uh, my concern is going to add fill into the meadow. I mean, these concerns, you know, uh, should we be developing on any site where we have to treat the water? Should we develop at all where we have to treat the water? That, that brings up some kind of, you know, warning on my radar is, you have to treat the water. Um, I don't know. I, if you're going forward with it, thanks for preserving the trees. Don't worry, try to preserve the meadow, try to keep it permeable. I would recommend instead of a pickleball court, which is adding more cement, that you had a garden beds or something so the people can garden. I would try to have some path to, to the supermarket so older people can, can live in there. I would try to have permeable surfaces instead of pavement. I would try to keep it as rural and looking at as beautiful as possible. And I'd like to see a, a, an overall plan. And I would not endorse any plan that has a goal of facilitating adjacent development. I, I, that, that's not part of what we're here to, to do without a plan. It's overall plan as to what a town center would look like. We're not, and the idea of putting in fill in this meadow is it's just going to make it ugly. So please consider my recommendations.
Brian, would you like to address those? There's, uh, there's a few points there that maybe you can address now that may satisfy Mr. Crane a little bit, or anyone else who has the same concern?
The, um, the meadow was, my understanding was actually, part of that was from a cut from um, Joe Sala, the owner, 20 years ago, wasn't always flat like it, like it is now. Um, the fill is just, is necessary to, to get those slopes that we need. There, the groundwater is so high, we can't dig down. So to shake the land to work, we need to go up a little bit. And to minimize the cut in the back, we need to get up there at appropriate slopes for the roads and to make them walkable. Uh, we still have to be able to allow the neighbors on the north to get to their driveway. So there's some site constraints for any development to be able to change other than what we've proposed thus far. Um, if the board would rather see a community garden instead of one of the sports courts or something of that nature, uh, I think we could accommodate something like that. If, if you'd rather, I mean, we can leave that up to the board if they feel that there's a, a better community amenity that might be less impervious, such as, such as to suggest a community garden. Um, we can do something like that.
I'm not sure how popular pickleball is anymore either. Might have been a fad.
My waistline says that I never tried it.
So, uh, yeah, if anyone else has any comments. So in regards to the pickleball court or that area, what was the applicant's intention? Was that going to be just for the tenants that live there? Um, or was that an open space? I, I can't recall myself. I know the road is, is going to be a town road, uh, that goes in to a certain degree. Uh, there's subdivision here, you know?
I think if there's a legal avenue to allow other people to use it, guests and stuff, you can definitely move forward with that.
How large is it?
Uh, I don't have the dimensions off the top of my head. I want to say the pickleball court was a regulation dimension
Okay.
about, um, for pickleball, pickleball. But again.
All right. So, uh, with that said, I think you've, you've addressed, uh, Mr. Crane's questions. I mean, the, the conundrum that we always have with development is that a particular person owns a parcel of property. It's owned for a particular use. By the time we get to this point here, it's not up to this board to arbitrarily deny an applicant their right to develop their property, as long as it's done in a way that is, uh, legal according to our laws. Uh, we have, uh, started to look at the comprehensive plan. I did a SWAT, SWAT analysis myself. We need, we need to meet and review, uh, the, the existing plans we have. Mr. Crane is correct that it's time for those plans to be looked at. And we can tighten up things, uh, providing that is possible. But at the same time, there's what they call a tax base that's important to, uh, develop as well to keep your property taxes low. So it's a juggling act. Uh, but I love nature almost as much as Mr. Crane. So with that said, uh, is there anybody else in the community uh, that would like to, uh, ask any questions about this application?
I'll just add two things also, though. There were some permeable pavers, uh, or permeable pavement talked about with some of your partner spaces as well. So we, we'll just keep monitoring if you're going to be able to maybe implement some of those. And, um, just, you know, we, we do have a comprehensive plan that has mapping on this. And this is a critical start of a parallel town center road that's parallel to 55, so. Uh, map 20 of the comprehensive plan has it. So if you, if you want to look at that, you can.
Mr. Wallace, did you want to, did you want to talk about, um, Jonathan Jurgens? And what you're recommending?
No, I just, that, I mean, uh, Dan touched upon it, everybody else touched upon the fact that he provided an overview of the infrastructure and the capacities, uh, Duchess County Waste Water Authority. And, um, you know, that he provided that at the sketch plan, which was in uh, October of, uh, 2024.
August.
August, sorry.
It was, and it was a regular public hearing.
Yeah. So I, I'd encourage, you know, the border of public to go back to that meeting, you know, to refresh his recollection as to what was said. Um, and determine whether or not it meets the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan can be found at the town website. And town center itself can be found at map number 20. And it illustrates, um, some of the architecture and, and the areas, the common areas, um, that are visioned in, in, uh, in the common plan when it was enacted in 2010, I believe.
Okay. So at this point, uh, Dan, did you want to go over, uh, the, the items that, that haven't been addressed yet? And, and your recommendation to the applicant?
No, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I, I think, um, email it to them and
Great, okay. So, well, I think what we're, yeah, if, uh, you would like to make a motion, you've already suggested it, that we adjourn the meeting until next month so that these items can be addressed? Is that, uh, where we're at now? Unless any other board members would like to comment or ask questions?
If I may, I do have one question.
Yeah.
Rob, before we adjourn anything, uh, for Dan, the reference to the wetlands onsite, um, just, just offsite necessarily, Jason. Uh, were we looking for the jurisdictional determination for that one? Um, I don't know if you have any?
It's a tough situation because, you know, these new wetland laws came in and and they're wreaking havoc because the, frankly, the DEC has not been able to turn them around with any efficiency at all.
I haven't gotten it's
We haven't gotten one single one back without having to write a certified letter.
That's where we're at.
And so the 90 There's not a professional around that'll tell you different from what I've seen.
Yeah, so.
Despite being told that we were going to have, you know, well-staffed and that this would not ever put any extra time on your project. So I, I just have to bring it up because it's, it's out there.
It's out there. So I'm just, in adjourned the public hearing, if, if we're referencing a jurisdictional determination um, regarding the adjacent offsite and, and whatnot, I'm anticipating the 90, a 90-day plus
Well, did you, did you ever have a wetland survey of the property before?
I don't believe we did. There was a little spot that was federal.
Can you just check your old files for that? Because I, I just, I thought there might have been one before and I just wanted to. So I, I think it's more of a clarification, but if, if not, then we have to go through the process and we have to go through the process, but.
Okay.
No, that's, that's fine. That's, I just wanted to bring up because of the 90-day and it just, the long turnaround for that, despite everything else being addressed, um, as much as we may be able to, there may be a delay relative to factors out of our control for state agencies.
Yeah, I mean, I know you've been waiting around, well, I shouldn't say that, but waiting on, you know, some responses from DOT and Water Waste Water Authority. So, you know, if, if you wanted to get that process going anyway, you certainly could. But, I mean, for, in terms of, of the board being able to make motions to close public hearings and we have, we are on the time clock at that point to make an environmental determination. So I, I think we, we kind of still need to have a little more on the stormwater and where that's going to go downstream. So for DOT, giving us input is going to be really helpful on that.
No, no, I agree.
So. I, I don't think we have a choice about the wetland thing. It's a, it's a law that came into act on January. And we would be derelict in our duties if we allowed a, um, an application to move forward without meeting that obligation. So it's really, I don't think it's something we can offer flexibility to. It's, it's just a New York state law at this point.
No, I just, I know, just, we had some, uh, public hearings, then we, I've had a long break here before coming back. We're here tonight. I just wanted to let everyone know if we have to adjourn us a couple more times to get those things
Right.
um, ironed out.
Right.
And I apologize.
No, no, I'm glad you're saying that.
I just want everyone to know that's here.
That's well noted. It's, it's obviously a new law and you need to address it. So that's not, it's beyond your control.
Mr. Chairman, um, the applicant can always waive the shot clock.
Right.
In order to get this record
Right.
you know, complete, so.
That's an option too, Brian, so you know.
I think, I think we're not there yet anyway.
Fine.
But, um, I think we, we need DOT.
Yeah, understood, yeah.
So, uh, if, if we get that in time, uh, maybe we can discuss a conditional month-to-month waiving of the shot clock afterwards, uh, so that the board, I don't take away anything from them.
And I know that, uh, Mr. Reinhardt and, and, and his neighbors, they have, they, I know they're interested in seeing what that turning lane is going to look like and the drainage and all of that, so. We'll just wait. So they'll, they'll, they'll announce on the agenda when the next hearing will be. What Brian is saying is that it's not going to be next month. It may not even be the month after, right?
Correct.
So we're looking at approximately, when?
I would anticipate the 90 days.
90 days from now? So the next, just as an approximation, the next hearing, public hearing for this project will be in about 90 days? If I said that correctly?
We need, we would need to adjourn it to a date specific or else they'd have to re-advertise, so.
Do you anticipate having, um, somebody from DOT coming here?
Um, no.
Regarding any type of study?
It's, it's been tough trying to get a phone conversation. I'm not sure how, how well I can get somebody from DOT. I mean, I can, I can reach out to Bill Orosen, we say.
So what would the
There are two concerns with DOT, right? The
Yeah.
Drainage and the, uh, traffic.
Yeah, the left turning lane, yeah.
Turning lane and traffic, is that, yeah.
And to me, it'd be foolish to proceed full, it'd be foolish, to me, it'd be foolish to put ourselves in a position
Right.
where we don't have the information necessary to do our job correctly.
Right.
And the traffic and the water in this case is part of it.
So why don't we, why don't we set a date, 90 days? What would be the date?
Uh, if the September meeting would be September 18th.
Okay.
I don't know if that's 90 days.
It's not 90 days, but it could also be at least to be able to talk about some of the other things. They may have made progress with DOT at the, at that time.
Okay. Is that a good day for you, Brian? Or do you want to bump it up another month?
Um, I mean, I can bump it up a month if I get something substantial from DOT. And if not, I can, if it's
Well, you could still come back whether it's a hearing or not, just to, as a workshop.
I can request this to adjourn the hearing and maybe have another standard of things.
We just wouldn't have the hearing until the 18th. All right, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to September 18th.
Okay, can I have a second? All right, all in favor? Aye. Good. Thanks, Brian. Uh, so at this point, uh, So at this point, I'd like to thank all of the neighbors for coming and participating, and we'll move on to the next item. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing for Pellegrino Lot Line?
So, before you do that, the board was interested in getting public comment on this last month, but procedurally, the board has not voted on a sketch approval yet.
Okay.
So technically, we should go through the process of the sketch approval of just a lot line, it doesn't matter which layout they end up going with, but, because the lot lines wouldn't necessarily change, the lot line's the same for both layouts right now, so you can grant the sketch layout or sketch approval on the lot layout for now, and then you can go into the public hearing if you don't mind.
Sounds great, thank you.
So you need to make a motion, somebody would need to make a motion to grant sketch subdivision approval before you open up the public hearings, what my point is.
Okay.
I will make the motion to grant sketch approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Just for the record, Colleen was in receipt of the affidavit and the certified mailings.
Great, okay. Is there anyone, Dan, anything more that you want to mention about this? Craig?
Yeah, there's, the current location on Cottage Road is not a public road, but the Pellegrino approved lot was created by a subdivision approval that pre-dated zoning. So that was a, these two lots came into existence prior to zoning, our zoning code. And it's within your purview from a legal standpoint, as a reasonable condition to ensure public health, safety, and welfare, to consider the proposed alternate emergency vehicle maneuvering map that is before you. And, you know, you can, you can obviously, you have to be satisfied that the road is of sufficient width and suitable grade to accommodate traffic, not only on the driveway, but also on Cottage Road.
Okay.
So I did give you, I did give you a map that was previously shared by Dan, that shows the lots that are actually in the road maintenance agreement that's on file at the county clerk's office. And you will recall that lot number one was not included, and that's the approved lot.
Okay.
All right? And that's part of the lot line adjustment. In addition, I gave you the pertinent sections, like Town Law Section 277, which is subdivision review, and it basically, parap, it lays out the planning board's consideration, and what you should be looking for with respect to fire safety in relation to the building, which is the house, or potential house.
Pete, you have anything to say about this? Fire and safety?
Here's your truck maneuvering legend, right here.
If you could please present?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, my name is Thomas Carrick with La Bella Associates. With me tonight is Anthony Pellegrino, the owner-applicant of the property at 9 Cottage Road. The applicant is looking to perform a lot line adjustment between the property at 9 Cottage Road, shown as lot one on the plan, and the lot directly adjacent to it, which is lot two. They currently live at the property on lot one, 9 Cottage Road, and they're looking to move their property line 130 feet to the southwest to provide some additional setback between the undeveloped lot, which is the lot that there is, lot two. In support of this, there is, they've provided two plans for the subdivision showing different driveway access points, one off Cottage Road and one off Dill Hill Road. We have also provided, from Cottage Road, a fire truck turning plan, showing how a fire truck, if it were to enter the site, how it would navigate it. The property has an approved septic system, excuse me, septic system on it, and approved well from the Dutchess County Health Department, that they have renewed the approval for. As part of this application, they would not be developing the lot, this is simply to adjust the lot line. That, that's pretty much what we have so far, and we're, as was mentioned, there is a maintenance agreement on Cottage Road, the property on lot one is not currently part of that. If the alternate one, which is the entrance from Cottage Road, is determined, is moved forward with, lot one would be added to the maintenance agreement for Cottage Road. If alternate two, which would be a Dill Hill Road access, lot one would still be added to Cottage Road, but lot two would be removed and added to the Dill Hill Road maintenance agreement.
Dan, is there anything you'd like to add?
You know, we've come up at the truck, the fire truck maneuvering plan, and the fire advisory board met on June 12th, and also spoke about it a bit. You know, the, the maneuvering shows that there's a little bit of the overhang that might just be getting pretty, pretty close to the guide rail, the turnaround area, I mean, you don't normally design everything for a fire truck to be able to make a three-point turn, but, you know, they've provided a little bit of a turning area here, and an apparatus operating area, the apparatus operating area is sufficient, but, but still, even with the turning, if they ever had to go down there, you know, it shows some off-tracking, and in the area of the low point where that turnaround is, you know, a lot of the drainage is being directed to that, so all the drainage that would be running towards the house would be running towards that low point, so the driveway in essence could create a little bit of a dam there. I would expect that there would be some potential for that soil to be soft. At the end of the day, the fire department didn't necessarily think that they would be taking a truck down there regardless. It's just a little too, too sketchy for them at this point, so. So they, you know, in earlier conversations with the fire advisory board, they talked about fighting the fire from Cottage Road, you know, not optimum, they could pull line down there and whatever else. But then, now the safety feature of adding the guide rail throws in a little bit of a monkey wrench with that as well. But, so that was the submitted material on this. I had mentioned to Tom that the profile going into the driveway would have to be a little bit less, our code requires 3% for the last 25, 25 feet before dwelling, that's a minor thing that can be corrected, it's not a big deal for what they're showing. And there was just a note that we need to change, just a couple other lingering things from some of the other letters, but until this board is giving them direction on what plan set to finally go with, you know, then, then we can perform, you know, more in-depth and final reviews and get this moving, so.
If my memory serves me, were you done?
Yeah.
Did you have more? Okay. So if my, my memory serves me, they, they felt very strongly about the fact that, given the plans, the way they're written now, they would be fighting the fire, if there was one, from the road, and that 25% of the water would remain in the line because of the distance?
There was some talk about that.
And then there's some problems with accidents, they'd have to set up a, you know, a chain with the trucks to supply water.
You would have to do that anyway.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you do that anyway, but, but there was some discussion about the length of line when you pull it from the truck and having some.
A percentage of it.
Yeah, but I'm not sure exactly what that was, to be honest with you.
So how does that impact us? That's?
Well, I mean, at the, at the end of the day, they didn't, they didn't say it wasn't doable, but it's just more difficult this way.
Okay. So I just thought you should all know that.
But there is an alternative.
Okay.
Okay, the alternative is to come off Dill Hill Road.
And they, they provided us with those plans last, last month, so you might not have a copy of them in front of you right now.
Oh, okay.
But they, they own them, so.
So the direction that we're going in is whether or not we prefer those plans or these?
Well, I.
And what about the road maintenance?
For their purposes, they need some guidance from this board, and then the onus is on them to work with the road maintenance agreement for either Dill Hill or Cottage.
Or Cottage, right. So I'll leave it up to the board to weigh in at this point.
And you also have a public hearing too, so that you can listen in on as well.
Would you like to comment before the public?
Just very simply, from a practical point of view, it makes more sense, personally, it makes more sense to come in from Dill Hill Road, because Dill Hill, to the proposed resident location, is a lesser grade, and it's a straight shot, and you're not worried at that point, great, great is not a concern. With what we have before us tonight, coming off of Cottage, all, I realize a lot of the talk is about firefighting, but also, you have to take into consideration EMS, and with the grade and everything, especially after a winter like we've had this past winter with ice conditions, I don't care what you have in ice, you slide. There's no stability. And from an EMS point of, approach point of view, here again, I think that it would be a disservice to whomever was at the house to have the access off Cottage when it could come off of Dill.
Thank you for that. Any other comments from any board members?
I, I agree with Peter, it makes, makes sense to me.
It does, yeah, I agree. Is there anyone in the public that would like to approach the podium here now and comment, sir, please?
You know what, I don't know if you guys actually formally made the motion.
Okay, can I have a motion to open?
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing for Pellegrino Lot Line Realign.
Good. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Peter Goodall, I live on 5, 5 Cottage Road.
Thank you.
I'm here to support the access to the property from Cottage Road. I didn't know about the fire department issue with this, but there is something I'd like to address about that. The fire department, our Cottage Road itself goes up a major steep hill. I don't know how any fire truck or any apparatus, as a matter of fact, trucks can't get up there, UPS trucks can't get up there. My driveway's somewhat steep, but it's almost at the same plane as their property, so I really can't see how that's going to be a problem, because then my property would be a problem. And trucks get down there. I've had all types of trucks, you know, tanker trucks, everything down there. So a fire truck should have no problem getting down there, I, you know, more of an issue getting the other way, going up the hill.
Okay, thank you for bringing that point up, that's important.
Yeah. The other thing too, is on Cottage Road, it'd be nice to have another, another resident chipping in to the maintenance of the road.
Good.
You know, because it's going to eventually need maintenance, so, you know, one more would help. Obviously, it's pretty expensive, you know, so.
Right, yeah, I don't actually, I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, well, paving, you fix it and all that, you know, that's.
You can come down and ask him. Is it, is it a paved road there?
Yeah.
It is, okay.
Yeah, but there's going to be maintenance pretty soon.
Right.
So, so I am, I'm here to support that, I, I think it's a much better road than Dill.
Okay.
Dill has, you go into Dill, I don't know where they turn around, because it's a dead end. So, I, I don't know.
Where do you turn around on Cottage?
Then the driveways. I mean, you can turn around in my driveway.
Well, the driveway could be constructed so that you can turn around.
Yeah, but I'm saying from fighting a fire, though, I, I can't, like, if you go up Dill and you take a left up the hill, there's, there's no way they're getting a fire truck up there. So they're concerned about going down to a property that's, you know, somewhat of a grade, but not, nothing that I could see is a problem.
It was the getting up this Serpentine driveway to an appropriate place to fight the fire near the house, as opposed to fighting it from Cottage.
Yeah, because I think anybody on the, when you're going into Cottage on the right, there's three houses, we all have that problem.
Your driveway just sweeps in, this one would have to make.
Well, my driveway.
Switchback.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
But as long as they can turn around, if you prove they can be turned around, it's not a problem.
Cottage is a dead end. And the applicant prefers the entrance from Dill, is that right?
From Cottage.
Uh, I'm sorry, from Cottage, yeah.
Essentially, you know, all of us would be losing, you know, personal patience and maintenance, you know, snow removal, all that.
Okay, okay.
Not to mention, there'd be a house essentially towards Cottage that's reversed, it's, I mean, the back of the house, the cottage, of that cottage.
Okay.
I mean, just, just for argument's sake, I'm just interested, why wouldn't that also apply to Dill? Like, wouldn't you be adding, isn't there a maintenance agreement on Dill, and you'd be contributing to that?
Yeah, but we don't live on Dill, we live on Cottage, so we wouldn't be, it wouldn't contribute to our road, it would contribute to the next road down. So if we add seven, where's, myself and seven, you'd be adding another lot to Cottage, which everyone who lives on Cottage would benefit, you know, you all, you split one extra house, now you take one off, now you have, you know, an extra house on Dill, which is great for them, but you would also have to get, ensure everyone on Cottage to sign off on that, which would be, would leave the problem a little bit.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if, if, if it's within, you know, the, the board's preference is to include lot number one, and lot number two went into, assuming Dill has a road maintenance agreement, it would be a net zero loss.
Right.
So, you know, the, the board can obviously condition the substitution of lot one for lot two in the Cottage Road maintenance agreement, and then the inclusion, they would have to approach Dill Hill and seek inclusion there.
Well, in the event that, you know, so it's essentially, it's us either net zero or gaining a lot, so that's the option we're presenting to Cottage Road residents.
Okay.
So if you don't sign off on that, maybe, you know, if you don't get the, the resident to sign off on moving the answer and losing a property, does that leave the property limbo?
Yeah, yeah. Are you talking about lot one? Or lot two?
The undeveloped lot, that's already on road maintenance agreement.
Right, but, you know, again, you could substitute lot one for lot two in the road maintenance agreement on Cottage Road.
That's true, so it's either net zero or gain a lot, which would be my lot, developed lot.
Right.
So you're.
Yeah, those are the two choices.
So hold on, now I'm getting even, you know, more confused. Lot, lot one doesn't have a maintenance agreement on any road?
No.
Right.
No.
So don't we need to straighten that out? I mean, how, well.
That would be straightened out with this, that would be included.
So that's going to definitely go onto Cottage?
Yeah, so it would be either just add lot one.
As opposed to adding additional.
Or add lot one and lose lot two.
Okay. I'd like to hear what other residents have to say.
I'd also like you to consider the aesthetics of a house right next to mine, which is going to be, my house is six years old.
Okay.
And it's a very nice house, and I don't want it to live to some house that's turned the other way, I mean, it's just going to, the property value will go down, it's aesthetically not going to look good.
Okay.
If that means anything, I know the other stuff's more important.
If that means anything, I know the other stuff's more important.
Neighborhood character does, we do need to take that.
We bought the house because of that, you know? And we don't mind another house there, but not backwards to what we are.
That's a very important point, you know? And if you need to think about anything else while you're up there, take your time.
No, that's, that's it. Thank you.
No, appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone else from the community like to step up? Anyone affected by this, like to weigh in? Okay. All right, well.
Do you want me to make a motion to close the hearing? I do have some comments.
Okay.
Want me to make it now or do we?
Sure.
All right. All right, so my feelings are a couple of things. Yes, it's not an easy driveway. I don't doubt that. It's, but my, originally when the applicant came, they asked me, I asked them to show us an alternative and they did their due diligence. They showed the alternative. So they've been cooperating the whole way through and their preference is clearly to have the access onto Cottage Road. My second thought is, was from the last few meetings, was, well, can you demonstrate it through engineering that an emergency vehicle can get up there? Based on what they've drawn and based on our discussion here, I think they have demonstrated the ability to get an emergency vehicle up there. It's not the most optimal driveway. It'll be one of the least optimal ones. But if, you know, I tend to trust engineering judgment before I trust, you know, someone's opinion that's not an engineer. So with that stated, you know, I'm satisfied that it can be accessed with emergency vehicles. Again, it's not the best way, but it's, it is, it can be. So I don't have any problem moving forward with this lot accessing on Cottage Road. Those are very good comments about neighborhood character. Neighborhood character is one of the things you are supposed to consider. You know, you don't want to create very inconsistent type development in a neighborhood. It does have an effect on that neighborhood. So that's just my opinion. And so I'm okay with the access on the Cottage Road.
Good question. Okay, so this shows and also a septic location for the proposed building lot. Why could not the septic location be relocated? In other words, if, as I'm, personally, as I'm looking at this, we're looking at something where there was, somebody said, well, I may in the future desire to subdivide the lot and we're going to do a septic, see where we can put a septic, plus also the fact that we have an entryway off a road. Eliminate the entryway off the road, eliminate the septic and let the buyer decide where they want to build the house and where they want. And because if the soils are good for a septic on, where it is also proposed and there are houses on Dill Hill that have septics, I'm sure that the septic system could be relocated.
I'll let Dan, could you maybe weigh in on that, please?
I mean, they, this is a, it's an approval that's in place already. So for whatever reason, some engineer did that. It doesn't mean, I can't tell you right now if there's a well down there that made them put the septic up here, which made them put their own well up here. I don't know, you know? But obviously, obviously, there are ways to make changes to that. They have to be more than 100 foot away from the wetlands, you know, 10 foot to the property lines, 100 foot from their own well if it's downhill, if their well is downhill and the septic system has to be 200 feet uphill. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that go on with the septic system design. Can't be over 15% in slope, so. There's tons of perempt.
But nothing we're doing tonight would limit a future person who buys this to come in with a new site plan and he can, in fact, redefine where the septic goes if they want to. There's a whole nother process.
Part of the reason for this process the way it is is because they're taking away land, right? In theory, you could have a driveway more like Mr. Goodall's actually, where if they go closer to the Pellegrino lot, then they could just sweep in a long way there and not have an S-turn. Right? So they're taking away that opportunity by doing this lot line realigning. That's part of the reason why the board is scrutinizing the layout and making sure that there's some feasible way after that land is gone to still make this lot viable.
Yeah.
That's the whole purpose of this process.
Yeah.
So I think at this point.
To Dan's point, I would just want to make a comment that if there are resulting variances that are needed, such as steep slope variances, you can direct the applicant to go back to the ZBA, get those variances and then come back here.
Right, but at this point, it's just a lot line adjustment. And they're just demonstrating a way that this can work. We have a sanctioned way we know will work or that's, it's acceptable to the board. If the new owner of the lot comes in, they have every right to come back and make adjustments. If they even want to go on Dill Road, they could come in with a site plan to us and we can review a site plan for them going onto Dill Road.
Only if there's steep slopes disturbance, then they would still come back to the planning board.
Or if they modified the septic.
No. Because in theory, we're, at least I hope so in theory, that what we're doing is looking at, or we should only be looking at the lot line.
But again, it's about the viability of the lot. We're taking away from the vacant.
Yeah.
I was just responding to you, Peter, that you were saying the septic can be moved and I'm saying, yes. We're not doing anything here tonight that prevents them from making changes to the septic or to how they want to lay out the house. In fact, they may lay it out different.
That's all.
You can condition the, if you go with the Cottage Road design, you can condition the improvement on Lot Two and direct the applicant to come back to the planning board and order ZBA before.
Any construction or permit is pulled.
Paying for a building permit.
Would you have an issue with that?
No.
No? Okay.
Unless it, you know, overall impact, I mean, like essentially we bought this and we wanted to just get a little buffer between us and anybody who lived there. Also, being in our three acre lot, it can subdivide into two lots because of the zoning. So, and I think that we took out probably the worst part of the property, the steep slopes with wetlands. You know, that's all we took.
Right.
So it's not like we took a very viable, it was literally just so we, our neighbor wasn't right next to us. And it was just an opportunity to do that. So that's why we just, we provided all this. We have the two accesses and it's essentially just to move a lot line. I think we proved that.
Okay. So if we approve Cottage Road and then we condition as the town attorney suggested for the future.
Doesn't affect.
Doesn't affect you? And I think.
Make it a less, very much less desirable property.
And that would please you?
To not have a condition. If you have a condition on it and a seller comes in, now we have a condition on the property that they have to come to the planning board before the planning board, which makes it more difficult for them to build. That's just how I see it. I don't know if you guys have talked in the work, but that's how I see it right now. Putting a condition on the property prior to, you know, us being able to put it on sale.
And you have a segmentation issue.
Yeah.
And, you know, you really, I would recommend that you actually deal with this vacant lot now and have the applicant do so, get the variances before somebody goes in there with a building permit and, you know, the building, let's say the building inspector is not aware that there were possible variances that are needed before the issuance of the BP. And it would be a problem. And that's where, you know, things get off track. And houses are built without variances that should have been, you know, applied for, so I don't recommend that.
And it could affect the viewshed of the neighbor as well, right? If.
Yeah, I mean, you can approve this with, you know, because it's going to be a viable lot. Lot Number Two already is a buildable lot, you know?
If I have to give it, if that's what it takes to get it approved, then I'll accept the condition.
All right. If that.
That's just to benefit us, to give us a second shot at the apple. I don't need a second bite at the apple. I've always been consistent with how we've made decisions on the planning board that we consider what the public has to say, we consider what the applicant is providing, we ask for changes. And when we approve these subdivisions and applications, we've taken our best step forward and provided the best product and I stand behind it. I don't like to go back and revisit these projects. If, all I was saying before was, the owner of the house may, if they want to choose to do that, we could still stand and say, this is what we approved and this is how we know it worked. But they have every right to come back on their own. I don't need to have a second bite at the apple. I'll be satisfied with it.
So could you explain a little more what you're getting at, Greg? You can go a little deeper.
If, well, the applicant has basically told you that an unimproved lot is going to be
Sold.
Sold, you know, to a developer or whoever, a builder. And I'm recommending that the board actually get the variances out of the way so that it's saleable with all the approvals, so that it doesn't get lost, you know, or down the road four or five years from now, that variances were needed. And it should say that on the map.
Okay, so the action that we should take at this point is direct them to.
It doesn't require any variances right now?
At least the code enforcement officer can, you know, find out right now if there are any variances that are needed. I don't know, I, you know, because of the steep slopes.
Is it your contention that there, does this meet the code or is it your contention?
Yeah, it was my understanding, steep slopes would not be a variance, it would be something the planning board would.
The planning board, yeah.
Yep.
So, yeah, I don't, I want to contemplate problems that they're not even proposing to do. I think it just clutters up the meeting. If this is the proposal, it doesn't require a variance, I'm in support of it and I'm prepared to make a motion on it.
Okay.
I just need to know what the motion is.
So we still didn't close the public hearing. Any other comments at this point? No? All right, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So what are we seeking to do tonight? Is that to just give them direction on the, do we have to do that through a motion or?
It's a type two action, so you don't have to do any seeker. So that part of the shot clock isn't in, you'd still have to have a determination on preliminary approval within 62 days, I believe, so.
And we approved the sketch, just tonight we actually did.
Yeah.
So you've got sketch approval tonight. I don't have any other comments.
And I don't either. I'm perfectly okay with the plan from Cottage, as is. And is there any other action you want to take?
So I don't know if we, do you need the straw? Do you want to make sure that you have?
Any other comments?
Full support from Cottage then?
The wood to the driveway, the wood to turn around, I mean, I think it's more of an impact from the EMS vehicle. I think the effort was made. I'm okay with it.
Okay. Fay, any other comments?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. So.
My turn.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Tom, you need to be, you know, for the 62 days, you'd need to be on the August meeting at worst. But the meeting deadline for July is Monday because of the lateness of this. So if you want to try to get everything together in one day, then we can hear you. Because I think you're short of the plans anyway.
All right, clove meadow subdivision under discussion. This one's a lot bigger. It has that pond in the middle.
Yeah.
The most exact.
Exactly.
No, you're right. Now, what we did talk about was this having public debt. Okay, please.
Hi, I'm Nick Towne from William County Town Engineering.
Yes.
I was here last January and I needed to go to the DUC to get the jurisdictional determination. So I sent the request in on January 20th, didn't hear anything. On May 21st, I sent the certified letter in and didn't hear anything back. So, and honestly, I've done.
What date was that?
That I sent the certified letter in, May 21st?
May.
Yeah, so it's been over.
Yep.
But, I mean, just to say, I've done several of them and I have heard back on a few. And all they say is there's wetlands on the property, which we already knew. We've already had the regional biologists delineate down here. So that's the DUC wetland, which is a small portion of it on the site. The rest of it is town regulated. So no change to the previous plan, essentially.
And all the buffers are at the new regulation?
Yeah. That's right.
Right. But you're done with DUC?
Yeah.
They just.
They didn't respond. So you send.
Oh, they didn't respond?
Yeah, they sent a certified letter in.
Yeah.
My understanding is they have 10 business days when you send the certified letter in. And if they don't respond, it's a default. There are none.
Default.
Under their jurisdiction.
There's none under the jurisdiction?
Under their jurisdiction.
So now it's just under our jurisdiction?
Meaning that the onsite wetlands that run through here are federal and town.
Okay.
What I can't remember is, did we designate, how did we designate the existing pond there in terms of conservation or is it included in lots, private property, whatever?
It's included in lots. Yeah, private property.
Is that how it always was, Dan?
It used to.
Oh, yeah.
From the start, yeah.
Okay. I remember in the first, first owner, he proposed to keep that open to the public. But we never addressed that throughout the process, yeah, okay.
Yeah, other than that, I spoke with the highway super. I sent in measurements of site distances. He's taken a look at it. He's conceptually approved of it, of the two driveways that access Heinz Road and the proposed town road. I'm furthering the health department review. I just spoke with. I'm furthering the health department review, I just spoke with the permit engineer over there today, he's pretty much good with what I've proposed, a couple minor comments left, but nothing major. And other than that, yeah, we've just developed the plans. So at this point, we're hoping a public hearing can be set, and also, we need a water resources permit, also because there is some buffer disturbance, so my understanding is that would be a public hearing in tandem.
So I'll leave it up to the board, Dan? Did you want to, while the board is catching up here, did you want to...
Yeah, just real quick on the, on the conceptual approval from the highway super, did he talk about a site line easement as well?
I, I told him that there would be one.
Okay, and that might run through part of that drainage easement near the front?
Yeah, it's, it's...
Yeah, it's that, that corner right there, yeah, okay. Yep. That makes sense. You know, the applicant's done a really nice job in the time he was waiting for the DUC to...
Had plenty of time.
To put in a lot of information on the plans, the plans are looking good, EAF is looking very good, it's a type one action, it's because this is ag lands and, which reduces the threshold of a type one action to 25%, so the proposal of any more than 12 and a half lots becomes a type one action, so that's what he's got here. We've circulated to date, determined that we are the lead agency, and as far as I'm concerned, it's definitely to a point where we could set a public hearing on the subdivision and the water resource permit, that'd be a concurrent public hearing.
Any comments from any board members regarding this?
Yeah, the, the circle at the end of the cul-de-sac, are you putting green space in the center of it?
Yeah, there's a bio retention area, actually, in the center of it.
Right in the middle of the circle?
Yeah, yeah.
Can we make the circle bigger and have the green space in the middle bigger? Making a wider radius and turnaround?
I mean, it is up to standards, it's up to...
The minimum standards, yeah.
I mean, yeah, it's pretty robust, it's like a hundred foot diameter, 96 foot diameter.
How, how wide is the road?
The road's 24 feet wide.
Yeah, my comment would be to make the inner circle bigger, making the out, that would make the outer circle bigger, but the, you'd have a bigger green space in the middle. That was just one comment I have.
We've got a few of those around.
I think we did that at Alana.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah. It'll be less impressive visually.
Would that impact your lot layout?
You know, these are some of the larger ones over here. Yeah, I mean, this one's only 1.04 meters.
Do you have a tree count on tree removals?
Yeah, right now there's 29 trees being removed and we're proposing 29 new trees. I didn't do that on purpose, it just happened that way.
So if you, going back to the circle, if you increase it, is that going to put the lots under the minimum size?
Yeah, I'd have to look at that because they're pretty close right now, lot six in particular.
So you'd need variances for those lots?
Yeah, and it's kind of...
I'm not requesting you change the right of way line, just make, requesting you make the circle within the right of way.
Oh, within it?
It wouldn't change the parcel configurations.
All right, just make the green space bigger.
Yeah, I can take a look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you have a 48 and 72 foot radius, 70 foot radius and 48 foot radius. If the 48 went to 60, you'd still have 10 foot shoulder.
Yeah, I can take a look at that.
With math, you're just quick.
Yeah, you can read that, you're good.
All right, and then that, like I said, the tree removals are a little bit concerning. I see where you're doing a lot of them, what are the calipers of the ones you're removing?
I don't have that in front of me, right? It's all on, it's all on the second sheet.
Okay. Leave one? I think there might...
So the, I'll just note the endangered species, swamp birch, that's noted on the site, there are no birch removals, we're not...
Under birch, are they actually swamp birch or...
I don't know if they're swamp birch, I know, I just know they're birch.
Can you see that?
Yeah, what I'm doing is I'm just flipping up and down and I could see...
These trees are 24 plus inches, 3 inches.
Yeah, this is pretty detailed.
So, I mean...
You know, if you adjust some of these house locations, you could save some more of these trees.
Four or six inch, you know, that not...
I think the, the street trees per our code, if they're, if they're street trees, the code calls for two and a half caliber, but that doesn't mean you can't use a barger.
Yeah, I mean, it's what you can find and what's reasonable.
Well, I'd like to ask if you can make some adjustments to the house locations to strategically locate them in a way that requires less tree removals. I, I don't necessarily disagree with the lot configuration, if, if there's a way to, I mean, the lots are pretty big, so I'm just thinking there may be some room to make adjustments in the house locations to, to try to protect the trees. And then secondly, it looks like you're doing a one tree, a one tree mitigation, it hasn't been thought out?
I didn't even, I didn't plan it that way, it just happened that way.
Okay, that's, that's perfectly fine, I understand that. And, and this is the venue to discuss, so, if we can do a better mitig, mitigation plan on the trees. Well, yeah, I mean, it's, one on one, you're placing full grown trees with one, two inch tree, doesn't seem like a, a fair, a fair deal, you know? We're trying to mitigate for the loss of green space, so it, I typically go for an inch per inch caliber replacement, and that's really more of a fair thing, but if you can just try to see what you can do to give us a more robust mitigation plan.
Absolutely.
There's no plans on putting any trees before the street as it comes in?
I'm sorry?
There's no plans for trees in the world with streets as it comes in?
Not right now, but, yeah, that's a good idea. I could talk to the owners about that.
Might stay quiet, maybe more often.
Yeah, right now, the major concern is screening for the neighboring properties, so wherever there was a lack of trees.
Right, you kept a lot of the trees on the, on the prop, the neighbors' properties, that's good. I'm concerned about one of the lots, the one that's, let me see, where, you have lot numbers on these somewhere?
Yeah, definitely on the first sheet.
Sheet one has...
Where sheet's got the lot?
In the circle?
Sheet seven.
Oh, I see, all right, lot 12?
Yeah.
Okay, so clearly you've, you've figured out a lot configuration that just barely fits within the buffer. My concern would be that the owner of that lot is going to struggle with the fact that the vast majority of his lot can't be, you know, can't be built in, it can be used, certainly the buffer can be used for, you know...
Yeah, you can, I mean, you can put a garden in that lot.
Right, right, but...
You just can't put a garage there.
Right. Is there a way that we can incorporate a covenant in their deeds to add additional protection to the existing wetlands? That's a question for you.
I know, I think so, yeah, it's probably a good idea, covenants and restrictions, we can make that one of the, you know, the documents, conditional approval.
Sure, yeah. Would you have any objection to that?
No.
I just think some of the lots will, and depending on who you get, you may get a really good guy and he's, he's really interested in protecting the environment, but we have to worry about the guy we don't get, who's, and, and some lots may be more susceptible to that problem than others, and I think that one would be. So, I, it, all the lots that have the wetland in it, I would definitely want to add that covenant.
I, that's, I agree entirely, and you know, that will then obviously be a, be a net benefit, right, to each of the property owners. Now, could you, could you share your opinion regarding a, sorry, your name again?
Shane.
Shane, thank you, my apologies, Shane. So, of a deed restriction versus a conservation easement, from both sides of the argument, if you could?
I, I, more frequently, in my opinion, I've seen the, you know, done as a declaration of covenants and restrictions, I just think it's easier from a, you know, the perspective of, of just having it, you know, recorded in the county clerk's office and, but that's the way I've typically seen it done, I, I don't, I don't think that there's a need for conservation easement in this type of subdivision, in my opinion.
So that's a deed restriction?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, makes sense.
It makes sense, huh? So, so, my vast experience as an attorney, which is none, okay?
Let's hear your opinion.
The, the deed restriction is easily broken between the seller and the purchaser where a conservation easement is not.
But we, we could make the town almost a third party beneficiary to the easement, is what I'm saying, that we can enforce the restrictive covenant, that would be the way to...
Perfect, thank you. Yep, see? Did you know that?
I'm not averse to either strategy.
Yeah, yeah.
Conservation easement or covenant, if you feel more comfortable with the easement.
I, I don't want to make any more, I don't want to make it any more difficult.
It's true, I mean, they're going to accomplish the same purpose, I understand what you're saying, I mean, that, that's, I just, that, that would be the way to address the concern there, to make, make the town have the ability to enforce for each of the...
If it's covered.
Yeah, if it's covered.
Exactly, exactly, perfect, thank you.
Well, I think for now, I'm, I think that's the comment, is either conservation, conservation easement or a covenant.
Yeah.
And we can continue, I don't want to stop the process, but...
No, I don't either, but the covenant would be a part of it that would, would please, I think, the town.
It's a good idea, I agree.
And, and then it would make it easier for you to file.
Are you saying every lot that has wetland, town wetland buffer on it? Or just lot 12?
Wish you didn't.
Because, because lot 11 has the same issue.
Yeah.
Lot 10 could have, you know, a little bit of an issue, lot 9 could have a little bit of an issue.
Right, and 13?
Lot 13 even, really.
I would say every lot that has, that is within the, that has the wetland or is within the buffer of the wetland.
Yep.
Could you say that again a little louder?
Within, every lot that is, either is, has a wetland in it or has the buffer.
Right.
The lots that don't have any, don't need that.
Okay. So it's quite a few of the lots, it looks like.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, lot 8 is going to be subject to an easement for the stormwater. It's going to be a stormwater pond in the town where the easement is.
Lot 13.
Yeah, it's something.
I'm going to say 8 through 13, because they have the existing stream there, there's the pond.
Those are, that's, those are all my comments.
Yeah.
I'd be ready to...
Excellent.
Thank you. I'd be ready to move, allow them to move to public hearing.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move this to public hearing for July, what date, would that be?
When you're, July 17.
Oh, July 17.
Yes, July 17. It's a public hearing for the, the water permit and for the site plan, right, and for both, so subdivision and water resource, yeah.
I'll second, yes. Any other discussion? Jason, Lee?
No, I think that I've just mentioned, just to circle back on the trees, at some point, as we go through the permits for the subdivision, you're going to have to have two street trees at minimum per lot, you know, spaced every 75 feet, so that's going to probably head towards your, you know, how you mitigate some of those trees, we need to show street trees, so you might as well start showing them now.
Did you want to suggest any, any trees?
I mean, I would, I would recommend black tupelo in areas close to the wetland. Nyssa, Nyssa silvatica.
Would you like to spell that?
I'm sorry, what?
Nyssa silva, silvatica, N-Y-S-S-A, black tupelo.
That's the Latin name.
Two, black tupelo, oh, silvatica, silvatica. They'll, they'll thrive in that location, they're beautiful fall color, beautiful fall color.
Thank you.
People won't want to get rid of the tree.
Okay.
So, I don't know, do my street trees, did we actually, did I...
You said two.
Stop the motion?
Oh, you need us to vote now? No, we, we didn't vote, we didn't vote.
We didn't vote, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is jet management apartments, please.
My name is William Beshrat, I'm representing the owner, Mr. Jim Traynor, he's here right We're finally trying to get this matter resolved and we received Dan's comments, they're mainly addressable, we have no issue with them, but there's a few items that I would like to talk with the board about in those comments, and that we've been talking about it. One of them is the floodlights on the building, and those floodlights, we're just going to remove them. They have been, they have not been used or turned on since the board showed concern about them at the very beginning, so the past few months, those lights have not been in use. And now we decided we're just going to completely remove them, and I will address the lighting situation alternative, there is lighting on the building itself, so for the future, we're going to create a little bit more lighting to be, to create a more safe environment in the evening. The other item is the plant that we spoke about as, on the front of the building to soften the parking lot, and we've been talking to New York State DOT regarding the sidewalk, that also the board liked us to extend the sidewalk, which we have no problem with that, so we've been in contact with the state DOT and been talking to them. They're really short concerned about the, the planting, and they felt that if we have to deal with it, we, it's going to be a, a process with them because the planting is going to be in their right of way, and I think the Dollar General do not have any planting because of that reason. It's just, they say it's maintenance and could be hazardous to pedestrians in the area if those trees, I mean, the bushes become overgrown or get ripped up for one reason or another by an animal or by wind, what have you. So like I said, the state is really, the DOT is concerned about this plant, so we will actually continue this.
Can I, I'm sorry?
Sure.
Did you say the state is concerned that the plants will be hazardous to people?
The guy, that's what he said, he said, you know, it could be, you know, they want, they want...
I'd love to know his qualifications behind that statement.
Well, what he said to us is that...
Was he, were you talking to a landscape architect?
No, I don't know what he is, so, but, but what he said to us is that if it's in the state right of way, it has to be reviewed, it has to be, it really becomes a major issue, and that is the main reason why...
No, that I understand.
Dollar General does not have...
I just want, on the record, that plants aren't dangerous to people.
I agree with you 100%. I agree with you 100%. Okay, just like, again, overgrown. The other item that we, that was mentioned is also that we've been talking about, is the screening, the side screening on both sides, the left hand side and the right hand side of the building, looking at it, with Dollar General on the left and the neighbors on the right. Existing on the property, there's mature evergreens that create almost a wall between the two buildings. They are in good shape, they are alive and well, and they are as old as the building itself.
Another one.
So that's the item. The last item is, I want to talk about, is the existence sign. The existence sign is used by Mr. Traynor, who's, who owns Paint Buster Company, which is just a small painting contracting, and that's their bread and butter, really create a lot of advertisement for them, I would like to, it's very well kept, very well maintained, and it will stay that way, you know, there will be no business in there... and it will stay that way, you know, there will be no business in there, except his son's going to be living in one of the apartments, and they, he'll be operating his business office from there, not meeting clients or anything like that, but you know, like, the paperwork, it's not in there.
The sign now is becoming basically a billboard?
Not necessarily a billboard, it's a sign, but in the future.
I just want, I'll just, I'll just let you know, I don't think our code allows for signs on properties where the business is not located.
Yeah, so it has to come down.
Yeah.
Come down?
Yes.
Even if I have a space somewhere in there that I can?
Has to come down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll take it down.
There you go.
Okay, so, all right. If the town courts votes for that, then.
I know, but he's turning it over to apartments.
I want it to be best for the town to, you know, I'm not opposed to the sidewalk, I want, you know, the town center, I see the vision that you're trying to do here, but you know, this building's been pre-existing for a long time, and I'm not doing any construction to the building or anything like that, but the way the spaces are, is the way they've been.
One of the problems, though, is that you're not doing any construction in the building, right, we, before we approve any application that comes before us, we cause them to make improvements, right, and we've given you quite a bit of latitude.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
And, you know, the building, like I said, hopefully in the future, when the value is there and the building is, you know, it will be refinanced, and definitely will be renovated and added to it.
That's why the sign, you know, we're, we're looking for some compromise with you here to improve the appearance of that lot, if you look at Dollar General, and if you look at the station grill, and what we put them through, you know, to make improvements, you look at Sparrow's Nest, and those, those projects that, that are, you know, just beautiful as a result of their effort, and them adhering to what we would like, we would like them to do, and what we want our neighbors to see, if you look at Mr. Sala, and what we're putting him through on Bischoff Lane, you know, I'm sure you could appreciate some of these suggestions, you know. Now, did you want to go over this, these recommendations?
Was there, was there a referral from the county?
Yes, there's a letter from the county, it was, it was dated, let's see, September 12th of 2024.
Is that in our, is that in our package here?
It was in last month's, I, I can forward it to you again if you need.
Yeah, can you just summarize, I don't want you to read it all, but are there, go over some of the main points?
They mentioned about the two to three-story requirement, which the, this board spoke about at the December meeting, and waived with a supermajority vote, which would be necessary to override any comment from the Department of Planning, they had a comment on there with regard to these being smaller apartments, and that the town might be willing to reduce the parking requirement, right now it's two per unit, and one for every two units for visitor spaces, so basically that comes out to two and a half parking spaces per unit, they have three units, so that's seven and a half required, they're showing eight. The Department of Planning was suggesting that because they're smaller, you might be able to reduce the number of parking on the site.
Does that, this require variances?
If, if they, on the parking, you mean?
No, the three-story.
No, we, we have the ability, I think Craig found in the, and mentioned at the December meeting, what the waiver process, it was a waiver from the planning, it wasn't a variance.
Okay.
Would you like us to reduce the parking?
We would rather not, because it's an existing parking, we're not creating it, so, I, we don't want to do any construction, we're just going to surface it and clean it up and make it look pretty.
And then they also, I think there was four points, I'm just pulling it up right now, so, let's see.
Do we have to override those?
Yeah.
Anything that they don't do, per this, we'd have to override.
One at a time, Dan?
I don't think the parking one, and we can ask the legal counsel about that, because that's just a suggestion that we might be able to reduce that account, you know, that count, but, lighting plan, you know, floodlights, not acceptable.
We will be taking them next week down, just take them down.
So you're remedying that issue?
And, but you need, you still need to give us a lighting plan.
I will sit down with you, with, with the permission of the board, I would like to meet with Dan, and we will address the comments and meet with them, this way we'll put it to sleep, every item, I want to go every item with him, and make sure that we covered everything, you know, just to make sure that we interpreted everything properly on it, and we'll address the lighting, we'll give you a luminous map on it for the foot candles.
They also mentioned about the sidewalk and the street trees, every 25 to 30 feet, avoiding conflicts with overhead utility wires, landscape buffer between the street and the sidewalk.
So let's talk about the sidewalk and the street trees, right? What, what are you, what are you proposing, you've already made recommendations?
Yeah, we, we proposed with the sidewalk, to continue the, 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 the Dollar General, the same sidewalk, we're going to continue it across the whole property, our property, so we have no issue with that.
Just so you know, it doesn't, where you're showing it now, doesn't line up with where it comes off of Dollar General, it comes like on the, it needs to be on the opposite side of that utility pole, to line up with Dollar General.
The utility pole has to be moved, yes, I, I'll take care of that, yes, you're right.
Are you saying the utility pole is located incorrectly?
It's not located properly on, on the survey.
So are you saying that the sidewalk is located, to line up with, well, let me just make the comment, and we don't have to have a debate about it, the sidewalk needs to line up with the sidewalk.
We'll, we'll do, we'll do that.
If you can just make sure it does, and then as far as like, we still want the planting buffer, however that's going to work, if that means you have to remove a couple of spaces, you're telling me DOT is not going to want the plantings in there, so it's got to happen?
And, you know, attorney, I mean, the, the attorney, the, the Dollar General doesn't have any planting, and their parking lot is in the front of the building, and their parking, their cars face.
We had them do a lot, we had them do a lot of plantings around their, the stormwater basin.
Yeah, there's a street tree and some other things, it was an existing tree we had them keep.
They're very small, you have to look carefully.
We have.
Slow down, to about 20 miles an hour, yeah, so.
We will look into doing some planting, but on our property, not in the state right-of-way, because if we put it on the state right-of-way, it's going to become a major, major issue with the state, that's what they conveyed to us, so he said, if you put it on your property, we have no problem, but the act, you want us to locate where the edge of their right-of-way from the center of the road, which is not the property line, I was under the impression that it's the property line, but it's not, so we are in the process, we have foiled a request of the map to see exactly where the right-of-way, and we're going to be implementing that on our map, dealing with them with the perm 33 application that we have.
So the survey is wrong right now?
Say that again?
Survey is wrong?
No, I did not say that, I said the location of the sidewalk, or the pole was in there, but otherwise the property, the survey is 100% accurate.
So that is the right-of-way that's shown?
The what?
Your plan shows the right-of-way.
It doesn't show the right-of-way, it just shows the edge of the property.
Which is the right-of-way?
And the, the edges, the edges of the pavement or whatever, those are accurate, but apparently from the center of the road to the edge of their easement, the 50-foot or the whatever it is, that's what he wants to show, I'm not familiar with it until I get their map, and there is a map that exists for that at the DOT.
It sounds, it sounds like he needs to reconcile where the right-of-way line is in relation, I mean, it is possible, there is sometimes situations where the property line is different than the right-of-way line, but that's usually, the property line is within, goes within the right-of-way, that has happened.
Exactly.
So are you saying that your property line goes within the right-of-way?
No, till we see their map, but those, the edges of, the, the white line, the center of the road, that was located by the survey, this is from the survey, the accurate numbers from the survey, the edge of their right-of-way, like, it was mentioned, that sometimes it is not the property line, and we do believe that it's the property line.
Yeah.
We do believe it's the property, but unless we see their map, I cannot really be sure about that, and like I said, we have, hopefully in the next few days, we'll be receiving the email from them showing us where the map is, and we'll be able to address it, if it's not the property line, then we will indicate it on the map, if it's the property line, then it's the property line.
Okay.
All right, so the other survey issues are, there's a mailbox, there, where you're showing evergreens that are on the existing property line, there's a bunch of deciduous trees there too, they should really just all be identified and shown on the map.
I, I will do that, I got, I got your comments, and I will address that when I meet with you, I'll, I'll go over that item with you.
All right, so you've got, you've got your, your work to do, and we'll see you next.
I will see you next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You too. Samana Estates?
I'll bring her back.
Yeah. Just a brief recess, please. Big guy in the back. He's on my, my security.
About the last item, are we back on, I don't know, for, they had asked for an extension of sketch approval, because it's good for six months.
Right, okay, so, can I have a motion to extend their extension for six months?
Six months.
Six months, this is for jet management?
Yes, I'll, I'll make that motion.
All right, do we have a date, Dan?
Um, no, I don't.
No, okay, future calculation?
It's December 19th, so it'll be December 19th of 2025.
December, okay. All right, can I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, that's for jet management. Okay.
Hi, Amy Tane from LRC, here for Samana Estates, we were here last month with the applicant to discuss the situation with the tree removal on site, and we're here following that conversation with the landscape mitigation plan, so the plan on the board currently shows the landscaping that we originally proposed, which is the kind of grayed-out colored, also with the existing trees to remain, and the blue is the indication of the new trees and shrubs that are being proposed, so part of that mitigation plan, just talking about number of trees, there's going to be 54 deciduous trees, 57 evergreen trees, for a total of 111 trees, and.
Could you repeat that, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, the number of trees?
I'm sorry, if you could, yeah.
Sure, so 54, 54 deciduous trees, 57 evergreen trees.
How many, what were the total that were accidentally removed?
The total of trees removed on site was 45, that were supposed to remain.
And could you rewind as to what the original removal and replanting was?
So the original replanting, so the, the landscaping plan that was proposed prior to the tree removal, we were including a total of 24 trees, so that's 16 deciduous, eight evergreen, and then 26 deciduous shrubs, so with the landscape mitigation plan, so this is talking like aggregate whole, there's, there's going to be a total of 135 trees and 75 shrubs, added to the, added to the property.
Added to the property now.
Yes, so that's the, the current, the, the landscape plan that was proposed prior to the tree removal, and the mitigation landscaping.
And what are the total, what's total tree loss now? Did you say 45?
45. So the, the 45 were the ones that were not supposed to be removed, that were removed.
And, and the entire, in the area of disturbance, what?
Um, I don't recall the exact total for the removal, but I can, I can get you that number.
Right, so, based on, so the, the biggest point we have are the calipers, the loss versus the calipers that's being replaced, okay?
Okay.
Have you, have you, have you done those calculations right now?
So I have our landscape architect here tonight to, to discuss, you know, in-depth with the design, and, and if you want to just talk later.
Yeah, I've, I've read your letter, and if you could just, for the sake of the minutes and the community, discuss the.
But, but, I'm sorry, before we start, excuse me, I just wanted, because I'm just very confused, you have trees, trees drawn in blue, and then you have other trees that I think are intended to be proposed, maybe they were part of the original plan?
Yep, so we combined, so LL1 sheet is included on LL2, just so we can see what it'll look like all together, so what's in gray as proposed, that's on LL1, and then what's blue as proposed is part of the mitigation plan.
So that was, so the gray was the original mitigation, and then now?
Yep.
All right, so just so we're comparing apples with apples, with this recent incident of the additional 45 trees being removed, your mitigation plan of 135 is just the blue trees?
No, the 135 is the, what we were originally proposing, plus what the mitigation plan is proposing, so it's all, all 135 are accounted for on this sheet.
So that's why, he had a very good question, is what the total number of, the way, the easiest way to understand this, is what the total number of removals were, and what the total mitigation of that is, and so, 45 isn't the total number of removals, those are just the additional trees.
Right.
So.
I believe it was on one of our plans, Dan, I don't know if you can pull up a previous one?
Yeah, I'm going to take a look, and see if I can.
That's fine, go ahead, I, I didn't mean to interrupt, go ahead.
No, it's okay.
Chris Hoff, I'm a senior landscape architect for the LRC group, just, I just want to add to what you're just talking about, just to clarify, the, the original submitted landscape plan has not been modified at all as part of this mitigation plan, the mitigation plan, the blue, has only been added to the original, excuse me, proposed, so, having understood why, you know, we got to where we're here, I just want to go through our approach for what we're proposing and why we're proposing it this way, generally speaking, we started with the stormwater, the, the three stormwater areas, to increase the plantings in those areas, because that's the most significant amount of grading that happens per the proposed usage, so, you'll see a really bigger concentration in those areas, and then it really fans out from there, there's a couple of different concepts in terms of layout, we really wanted to diversify the habitats that are in here, but then as we spread out a little further, we started to look at it a little bit more as a design issue between, we can kind of accomplish both, we're trying to establish some buffering between the proposed houses as well, as expand on the diversity in the entire site, the, the, the types of plantings, these are all native plantings, we did include, and I, I'll look at the numbers when I have my other glasses on, but there are higher canopy trees, and there are very many tall shrubs, low trees you could consider, that are, that are all native, and we introduced quite a bit more eastern red cedar at varying sizes and mass, because they, they tend to do a better job enmassing for habitat than spreading them out, and in terms of sizing, we, we have varying sizes of the, of the red cedar, and of the end caliber of tree, and sizes of, of trees, that if you can envision, you know, what a natural forest would look like, you have taller, you have medium, you have lower, and as it grows, it grows at the same time, so, if you think about, if you're going to, you know, plant a Christmas tree farm, you're going to put all four-foot Christmas trees, and then in 10 years, they're all going to be 10. you're going to put all four-foot Christmas trees, and then in 10 years, they're all going to be 10 feet. It's all doing this. Well, we're trying to do is have it start like this and keep going like this, so that it naturalizes and does what it would want to do if it happened on its own. The other part of what we're proposing is that, and being aware that what was taken down were quite a bit of tall canopy, high canopy forest trees. So there wasn't very much of an edge condition or an understory condition happening before. So we're trying to establish that as well as the taller canopy. So in some of the areas where we're next to the edges of trees removed, we're trying to establish that edge condition, which is visually more attractive, but it's also more conducive to the bluebirds and the other critters that are out there and the things that we're trying to encourage. All of the shrubs and most of the trees that we're proposing either have berries, catkins, seeds, or flowers that are good for pollinators, good for birds, good for all the habitat that we're trying to encourage and protect. And again, everything is native, so there's some attractiveness to look at. But primarily, this is just to be a very, very naturalized environment to encourage wildlife and to bring back probably what wasn't even there before, maybe as well as it could be now, because of some of the things we're proposing that were not existing on site prior to the tree removal.
Can you explain the different dianures of blue circles? Because there's a link up on top that says the different types of trees based by letter designation. But you have in the map the different radii of all the little blue circles. What is the differences between those?
So generally speaking, the larger circles indicate the larger canopy trees. And again, let me do this so somebody has to be blurry, or you guys are, this is. The larger circles are going to be the larger deciduous trees. We vary the sizes partly graphically so that it reads like we're varying the different types of trees. So the larger circles would be more of the red maples, American hornbeam, sweet gum, tulip tree, black gum, red oak. So we're doing one and a half to two-inch caliper on some of the maples. Seven, eight foot on, so for example, chablot is a multi-stemmed tree, so it's not measured in caliper, it's measured in height install. So although it'd still be a 25-foot tree maturity, we're showing it as planted at seven to eight feet. We have a couple of two to two and a half inch caliper trees going in. Most of the cedars that are going in are seven to eight-foot install. And again, the graphic, it's not a one-to-one graphic ratio, so it's more probably better to look at the plant list and the size install. We have 10 that are going in at five to six, and we have 14 going in at four to five. So that's sort of establishing that.
That's what I was asking, because a lot of them seem of a thinner width, which is why I was asking the differences in the bubbles, because the bubble, the circles tend to almost make your eye think that it's going to be bigger than it might be. That's why I'm trying to get that.
Gotcha. And in some cases, that's the case, but probably not for every single one. Generally, when we have the larger circles, it just indicates that it's a larger tree. And we always struggle with this, because we could show a plan with all of the proposed plants at maturity, which could be 25 or more years from now, and it wouldn't make any sense. So we always try to figure out a way to, and we could show them all as little circles, and that doesn't read very well either. So we try to find the balance of this indicates that this is going to be a fairly large canopy or a larger canopy, and then space those circles accordingly. So if you're going to see a bunch of clusters together, it's because we want them to grow together as a unit. If you see some standalones, those are more likely shade treated than larger caliper trees.
So I have two comments, and I'll wait for Rob, because you know this is Rob's thread department. The other item that I wanted to ask was, what was going to be any plan for Beekman Road? For any trees to get filled in on there, or was it because there's nothing there? So was there any plan of putting it in there, or what's?
We had not had a plan to put anything there or discussed that.
Okay, well, that I think needs to be addressed. Also, again, from a visual perspective, based on what would the loss look like with everything? It's kind of six. There's a lot of questions and a lot of feedback on what it's going to look like. I think it would benefit from a public perspective and the board perspective. I don't want to speak for everybody, but there should be some sort of photo sim or something that can show this is going to be what it's going to look like at planting, and then what it's going to look like at a maturity. So you can see the development of what it would look like initially and what the goal is. So the idea with the circles and where it's going to be, you'd have some sort of feedback mechanism to get an idea of what it will finalize at.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Well, if that helps you visualize it better, sure.
Now, to Jason's point, the existing trees on Beekman Road, you're not... So the blue circles are your future canopy, is what you're predicting. These existing trees here, are these the actual canopies of these trees that are there now? Or did you just plot them with a standard?
Are you talking about over on that side?
Yeah, because to me, most of the damage was done in the center and side and back. What was removed from the front on Beekman Road inadvertently? Was there damage to, or the view shed from the road?
So it doesn't look like there was any removed along the road that wasn't supposed to be. There's these ones that are to be removed that are there still. The ones with the blue circles, the X. Those were originally intended to be removed, and they still remain there right now. So they do need to still be removed.
Oh.
Okay. So was your question regarding?
Well, I think that makes his point even more important. So he, you've addressed, you've addressed the problem towards the back of the lot, but not the front of the lot.
Well, you're talking about planting along Beekman Road. That would probably be an issue for site distance. So I don't think that's achievable.
And it's a bit of a broad statement. I mean, it can be a little more nuanced, the design. Obviously, right near the driveways, you worry about the site distance.
Yeah.
And there are ways for you to demonstrate site distance with site triangles, right? And then put plantings outside of that?
Yeah.
There's a site easement proposed. The review of the driveway is by the county, since it's a county road. They are requiring site easements, so...
So they can plant within?
They can look at that line and then look inside of that line, inside the property line, and possibly see if there's any places to supplement what's there.
The site easements will be maintained by the landlord.
So, all right, just from my perspective, just a couple of things. Thank you for a very well-intentioned landscape plan. It's a comprehensive plan in that it's looking at different, it's not just planting trees. It's planting from a biodiversity, from an ecological standpoint, and I like that. As far as the stormwater basins, you added a lot of plants to that. It's a great place to put them. I hesitate to say that there should have been a lot of plants there to begin with. It was a pretty sparse planting under the original proposal. Now, this is more of the appropriate level of planting for those areas, so that's a good thing. I have two concerns, two comments. First, temporary, and then permanent. Well, let me go with the long term. The long term, I'm concerned with the amount of mitigation, and I'd like to see a more, as I had mentioned in the last meeting, we need to see a mitigation that's commensurate with the removal, okay? So we still don't know the numbers, and so I guess you'll have to come back with that to us and tell us what the actual tree removals are, and then...
So are you talking number of trees, or did you want to call it?
Well, last time I had suggested an inch-per-inch caliper replacement. So I realize you're doing some shrubs and stuff, and so that's a harder thing to factor in. So I would recognize the fact that you're, that should supplant some of the trees, the shrubs. You know, four trees, four shrubs per tree or something might be a good way to, you know, meet the math on that.
Because if you could talk more about the loss. I mean, how many of these plants do you expect to lose? Because I think that that's, I want to speak for Rob. He's trying to calculate that in.
Right, that's the other thing is, first of all, we've lost 12, 24, 28-inch trees, and we're placing them with two-inch caliper trees.
Right.
So to say, to compare them on an individual basis isn't really fair. And I guess you might have heard that from my previous discussion with the other applicant. I don't just apply that, I try to apply that principle equally. So, but also, John is right. What's the success rate of these trees? What are we guaranteed? You tend to want to, once you guys are gone, I hate to say it that way, but it's the truth, and I'm going to say it that way. Once the developer is gone, that's it. We can't go back to him anymore. Whatever many trees died, I can't go back and find him and say, "Those trees died, can you replace them?"
Yeah, you can do...
The one-year guarantee, the one-year guarantee, that's an industry standard.
No, you can make it longer than that in the approval of the plot plan.
We can't, no, you're right. You're right.
You can...
So we should do that. But once he's paid and once his bonds are released, how do we compel him? Maybe we don't release the bonds?
I don't know.
That would have to go with the property, no?
Right.
Well, I would just add that we, our typical landscape plan and the previous submission, the other one before this one, has the notes that call for a one-year warranty for the landscape contractor that installs it. One thing going in our favor with this type of planting plan is these are all native plants. They have a better survivability rate, and also, this is not an urban environment. So if we were talking street trees, I'd be much more worried about loss. But I understand your concerns, and if, you know, one good example is if this is a fall planting, there's a much better survivability rate. Now, I can't get an idea that that's the case. But then if it's spring, especially given the three days that we just had, whoever be, because it's all about watering, that's the biggest thing. So somebody would have had to have been out there or potentially risk having to replace everything with that kind of weather. So we always have a one-year warranty. And that would be on the landscape contractor to have to do.
All right, well, I think my point is, is we don't know what's going to happen. We may have a good spring next year, or we may not. I think we have to plan for the worst. And so the point is, is plant the more trees. This way, some die, you could have a reasonable expectation that you've mitigated that effect. And so my comment is to, we want more trees. We want to commensurate with what was lost, and I don't think that's unfair to ask. Now, to the short-term issue. I've been hearing and seeing on the town board meetings and stuff, people have been complaining about the site as it is. I realize there's a stop-work order, so we'll have to talk about this. But we need a minimum way of opening up, allowing them to work, at least to stabilize the site, to put up erosion control measures or maintain the erosion control measures, to lay down seed, to clean up some areas, maybe.
Yeah, there's standing water on the property right now.
I don't know how we address that. I want to know what the applicant thinks, how they, what they can propose, you know, that would give us a temporary solution to stabilizing the site until we figure out how we're going to address it.
Is John here? The neighbor? Yeah. Oh, John, is the neighbor here? No. I forgot his name. Okay, Jared, okay.
So going back as far as bond, my partner and I, we plan on doing work in the town. We understand that this mars our record, and it's not a good way of starting. But we plan on doing continued work in the town if it helps to post a cash bond that then stays in place longer than a one, you're right, that once the cash, once the bond is released and once the project closes and that company closes, but we would voluntarily, if there's some type of sum that makes sense, where it's not just, hey, let's get some plants, end of the season, not a really good, whatever it is, and then we're gone, like... So if it's a longer duration than typical, and there's not a lot of infrastructure here, so it's not going to be a dedicated town road where it becomes a maintenance bond or something like that, but we would leave a cash bond in place as a way where then the town could spend against that, or the town could say, hey, that was, the work was inferior and all these things died. So that's something that maybe we come back to, when we come back next month, we could then propose that. As far as doing work, if, you know, is the question, how can we make sure, how can the town make sure that we don't do more work than would be, like, the tree contractor is ready to take out and chip the balance of the trees? We would not stump. I think something, a mistake, I've been thinking about different mistakes, but one of the mistakes that we didn't make, or that we did, that we have not made previously is we should have put silt fence along the perimeter of the property. So before any work is done, silt fence goes along the perimeter of the property. As far as work, no stumping would occur. And it would be, and all this needs to go in writing, but we know, we wouldn't be trying to do and cause any work to be done. The one place where I know that the neighbor, Jared, has contacted the town, if we could get permission to stump in that, well, I'm going to go back on what I just said. What he's hoping to do is that we could get the drainage in, in that area, that's directly along where our property's border, there is drainage pipe that needs to go in. And so what he's hoping, because I've visited his kids, they are tempted to come on our property and different things, and he's concerned about mosquitoes, he's concerned about safety and different things like that. So if it's possible to work within that one strip that borders his, to put in drainage pipe, to get that graded out, to get that stabilized, and get that planted. There are plantings that are supposed to occur right alongside that on our side of the property line, as well as on his side of the property, or something that we've negotiated and worked out with him on his property. I think that would make him happy. It's one where if we were...
If I can interject, from his, the record, when he came here, he was in complete support of what you did.
Correct.
So I'm not worried about, he's happiness, I feel like he's already happy.
Yep.
He's just, now there's ponding and stuff.
Yeah, I think I was trying to explain that if you're allowed to do this work, you could take the water off the site, and that would stabilize this area with the drainage in there and the planting.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just, before I forget. So we discovered that there aren't enough plants on Beekman Road, right? Trees being planted right now. I don't know what you can add without disturbing the site view. I certainly want to make sure nobody gets into an accident as a result of any decision we made. But I don't recall any of those trees, and it could be that I just wasn't looking close enough, but you said still have to come down, which we'll be waiting until next April, right?
Next November.
Or November, I'm sorry. November is when those will be coming down, just to make that clear on the record. But are they now? I don't think they're marked right now, are they?
There's seven that were shown on the stump removal. Do you have a stump removal plan?
Yep.
There were seven still that were not...
Yeah?
That were not taken out, that were approved to be taken out. Yeah.
And they're, I mean, are they physically marked now on the tree with a ribbon or paint?
No, I don't know.
Oh, okay. Is that usual?
If it's from our tree removal plan, they would...
That's different ways to...
It's different phase?
Different contractors work different ways. But I mean, if I can go back to this temporary, I'm not looking to create a logistical mess. Last thing this project needs is complexity. I appreciate your neighbor wants you to do some planting, and, you know, I, all I'm saying is, we're in a, we're in a situation now, okay? You've disrupted and disturbed the site. We need to stabilize it temporarily until we figure out this mess. we figure out this mess and come up and agree on a final plan, and that's all I'm saying. If it means putting up the silt fence immediately, laying down seed, removing some of the downed trees that are disturbing or altering hydrology, that, that, and you may not have the answer to that, by the way. Right now, you have a stop-work order, right? So, my question is to the town, is how do we allow him to get back onto the site for the minimal amount of stabilizing the site and preventing erosion until the project gets back on board? Is, do we have, does the board have to release them from the work order, is it a conditional release from the work order? Is that how it could work?
It could be partial, I mean, after the last town board meeting that was mentioned where there were some complaints, you know, I had some conversations with the building inspector, and, you know, we talked about whether or not there'd be a way to maybe allow them to, you know, lifting the stop-work order to allow for removal of logs, chipping as necessary, restoration of the hall roads and the areas damaged by the heavy machinery and vehicles, and then from there, it'd be an inspection by myself and the building inspector, see where they're at with it, and then anything else at that point that makes sense to stabilize and get the site into a more orderly fashion.
I, I completely agree with that.
One of the, one of the questions last month was, how do, how do we prevent that?
That's a town board.
Recommendation to the town.
That's a town board.
Yeah.
Recommendation to the town.
In the future.
Oh, well, that's, that's something that...
Isn't that one of the, isn't that one of the questions that the board wanted to address?
What, could you repeat it? I wasn't listening.
How do you prevent an event like this reoccurring?
Okay.
Well, you can't, you can't.
I mean, it was a mistake, I, I, I'm hoping that it doesn't happen again.
I've given it some thought. Let me throw out the idea to you that on any given building lot where there is to be tree removal, and it is to, there are trees to be removed, which opens it up where there are to be mistakes, okay, that on each building lot, there'd be, in lieu of, I don't know if I've got the right word, right, correct term, but a bond.
There is a bond, we had it.
Excuse me, a bond for every lot totally related to the tree removal.
Oh.
Right? And the idea, all right, and what's running in my mind is a, a bond specifically for tree removal of a minimum of $10,000. And the idea is that if something like that can be done and can be incorporated in a site plan where there are trees to be removed, then the developer is going to make the person that's doing the tree removal aware of the fact that they may be suffering a $10,000 loss.
Would that apply to, to a subdivision, or let's say somebody has a lot?
Quite anything.
It's a difficult situation, because when a subdivision is approved, lots of times, they're showing it's viable, but you buy it, and you want to have a house over here, and we said that they could remove trees over here. Now, when, when they asked for the trees to be removed before the bat restriction, they basically pigeonholed themselves to say, "We're putting the houses exactly as we have them on the subdivision plan." Right?
Correct.
That was, that was on them, that's their choice, they went with that. But when we prove a regular subdivision, if you have a five-acre lot, you would put a house somewhere, I might put it somewhere else. So, it's difficult to...
I mean, Peter, I agree that that's a motivating measure to prevent them from trying to, you know, make mistakes on tree removals. We happen to have an applicant who's committing himself to do the mitigation, regardless of having a bond, so that's good. But I think it's really more, if we're going to have this discussion on how we prevent this in the future, it's more about enforcement. It's more about marking these trees, putting, simplifying enforcement, putting up fences in areas to prevent, and then having, we need better enforcement measures. We need somebody inspecting, making sure it's not happening.
Well, then if you're doing that, then what you have, if you're going to do that, then you have to have an escrow, right off the get-go, monies to cover specifically, specifically the monitoring of the removal of the trees.
I mean, I, I agree with you, you have to have money in escrow. I don't think that was the problem here, I believe there's money in escrow for us to inspect. We didn't, we didn't not, let me finish, let me finish, please. We didn't not inspect because there wasn't money.
Right.
There was money there, that's not, wasn't the problem.
And it was, just, I have to clear, I have to clear the air. It was inspected prior to the bad season by the engineer and by our code enforcement officer.
It was.
It was, they were there, and it was done correctly prior to April 1st.
Okay.
The problem that occurred was after April 1st, okay, during the breeding season, and nobody knew that that work was being done. There was no information that was reported to our building department that they were going to show up and, and remove additional trees.
But some of the trees were removed during the right season. Some of the additional, some of the additional trees that weren't meant to be removed were moved, moved during the...
I tried to say it that way. During the breeding season.
So, no, no, I'm saying during the season we allowed them, they cut down additional trees above and beyond.
I missed that.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I missed that. Is that true?
We don't have to get too nuanced about it.
I didn't realize that.
All I'm saying is we need more, and I'm not trying to indict our own enforcement. They were there doing their best with the limitations they have. We need to increase resources to allow for more monitoring and inspection, and I think, whatever that means.
That's what I was confused about, you know, the fact that those trees that are on Beekman Road are still not marked. Am I wrong? Are they marked?
They're supposed to be marked for our tree removal plan. If they're still marked, I, I'm not...
I, I just didn't notice, because I've, you know, I've looked pretty hard there, and maybe...
When we asked our surveyor to mark the trees, we did ask him to put the, the marking on the inner side of the tree.
Oh, okay.
So, if you're driving by the site, you might not see it.
Understood, that's probably the reason.
I don't, I don't want to sound like this, but this is a good topic to discuss.
Yeah.
If somebody else asks for tree removals right now, I think we need to kind of circle back, focus on this.
Okay. So, so where are we at now?
Well, I, I made all my comments, I, you guys have heard my, our, and Jason made his comments, so I'm, I'm done for now.
I'm good.
Okay, great.
I, I think the one thing I would just mention is that there, there were, you know, I think you have some one and a half to two-inch caliper in there. Our code for street trees is normally two and a half, I'd like to see at least some of those be increased. I, I wouldn't want to see an inch and a half tree placed right now.
Yeah. I mean, just so we're crystal clear, because I know I may have been misunderstood, or maybe I didn't make myself clear previously, I would like to see a, a greater mitigation plan, you need to find more places, and Jason and John had made some recommendations on where there are more places on the site for you to place trees, and so, a mitigation plan that's more commensurate with the loss of what occurred out there.
But you mean the loss as a whole?
Yeah.
So, our original tree removal plan plus what was removed that was not...
That's the simplest way to look at it, I think. It's, why, why complicate it with trying to describe it as, this is what our original removals were, and this is what our mitigation was, and this is what our, I, just start with all the trees that were removed, and then the mitigation plan.
And Jason, could you just clarify what you had, you had talked about a visual, what, do you have something in mind that...
Yeah, like a photo sim that's going to show the site and then plantings, so, in other words, what we've done in the past, even when we did with the solar farm, you were able to, there was presentation by the applicant to show what the set looks like now, what it would look like with the plantings, and then what it would look like at maturity, that way you can see the stages, and then everyone gets a better idea. Because again, it's, it's difficult, when you're looking at blue bubbles and a lot of this stuff, and they need to visualize that and incorporate it, please.
So, is, is there certain perspectives that you're looking for, is there like three perspectives, two perspectives?
I would say, and it's from both sides of Beekman and the other side, so you can see into the lot, and then especially where all the damage was done, especially where all that standing water is, like, obviously it's going to be graded, it's going to be finished up, you know, to the plan, but again, there's these big giant gaping holes in the property now, that are, it's difficult to visualize how it's going to look after that.
And you also mentioned a different type here, so insulation...
Installation, what would be considered as the architect would have mentioned about, you know, maturity, what would be considered for maturity, please.
Is that something that you can accommodate? So, do you, do you have the abilities to do that?
Yeah, I think that's the best way to approach that in-house, but there's, there's a wide range of methods for graphically representing on your ass, I understand what you're looking for, yeah.
Some examples, Peter Poltrak brought it up, we, we requested this of the solar farm, maybe if, those were really, those were well done, and you can use those as a point of reference.
Yeah, I think that they took regular photographs, and then were able to...
Please render.
Yeah, recommend her over the photographs.
Yeah, yeah.
The tree replacement should be done after the house construction.
Right.
Yeah, my, my only thing about the temporary measure was just to stabilize, do we need to make a motion to make a recommendation to the board on that?
To, I don't think it's, you know, it's the building inspector, zoning administrator, code enforcement officer that puts the stop-work order.
Yeah.
I don't know if it has to go through the town board, a recommendation.
From this board?
Yeah, to, to lift the stop-work order first, some of the things I had mentioned, for the removal of logs, chipping of wood, restoration of hall roads, areas damaged by heavy machinery and vehicles.
I mean, you can make a recommendation, but it's not binding.
No, well, I know, we don't have any authority over that stop-work order.
Yeah.
All we can do is make a recommendation. If we made that recommendation, would you, would you guys be prepared to commit to it?
To...
Removing the logs, restabilizing the hall...
We just got to have that work as soon as we can.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should recommend it to the board and see what's...
It would have to go to the building inspector.
Oh.
To Jessica, yeah.
And I think she just went on vacation, I don't know for how long, but...
Can we make a recommendation, she comes off vacation?
Yeah, you can.
I'm staying out of that.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. She does a fantastic job.
Yep.
She does.
I, I would make, I would like to make a motion that the planning board recommends to the building department, and then the building inspector, that they provide, that they lift, they do a temporary lifting of the work order to allow for specific work to be conducted, which would include...
Stabilizing.
Stabilizing all the disturbance that occurred out there, removing logs, allowing for chipping, and what else did you say, Dan?
Water.
Standing water. I didn't mention about the standing water, but, because I don't know exactly what you do with the standing water, but restoration of hall roads, areas damaged by heavy machinery and vehicles, that's part of stabilizing.
Yep.
Removal logs, chipping of wood.
Silk fencing, which is...
And removing any obstacles to drainage that are causing ponding.
Yeah.
Which maybe...
Could be a log, or if, you know, if you have a log that's holding up and ponding water, you know, and...
And then, we would do inspections and follow up, and if there's anything else that needs to be done, at our discretion.
I'll, I'll second that emotion, emotion.
I love that song, too.
Wouldn't, so I, I don't know how big the standing, standing water is, but you already talked about them, you know, dealing with the tracks and such, wouldn't it be a matter of just filling it in with the material that is there?
Part of the restoration of the hall roads was intended to be that they were going to actually decompact them as well.
Scarify?
That was what we talked about, but...
Scarify and seed, and maybe a little bit of rough grading to remove or any...
There may need to be, just to...
But, but only as it relates to state, to removing the ponding and stabilizing. I don't want it to be licensed to, you know, build the driveways.
Right.
So, we have a motion.
As far as, and whatever the planning board wants, but just as far as this neighbor, is the planning board interested in that drainage work here, so that way we can get that go of plantings in here, and then get plantings in there, and do that finish drains, but even if it's just in that dedicated area where the plantings are occurring, is that up to you, Rob? Do you want to consider that?
I, I, I don't want to consider anything above and beyond, just providing a temporary solution to the current problem, which is ponding and water. I realize that's the permanent solution for that area, but...
But there's going to be construction going on in that area as well, no?
Well, once the drainage pipe is done...
I mean, septic fields and such?
Not, not, that little area that, right, right in here, there's standing water here, there's standing water here, so the places where I've noticed the most standing water, here's the neighbor, there's standing water here and here, and then kind of above the future location pond, it's kind of like right with this, but I don't have any standing water.
I mean, I appreciate what you're trying to do, and I, I'm really, I just really want to keep it as simple directive as possible, because there's a lot of wiggle room, and right now, the trust level isn't there, so I think if we could just keep the directive as simple as possible, until we work this situation out, we gain some trust again, and we get, we work back towards a plan that...
And we're just making a recommendation, at the end of the day, this is up to Jessica in the building department, I mean, so...
The cleanup work has got to be done along, is going to be done along that property line anyway, it hasn't been cleaned up yet, correct?
We, once the stop worker runs into place, work order limits the place we have.
Right, so if the work order is lifted, that area is going to be cleaned up.
Again, it's not, I'm only lifting it for certain, we're getting outside of our purview.
Right, logs are going to be cleaned up, if that's the case, and you want to continue, you...
It looks more from the law, that's why I'm asking, from just a safety perspective, they have small kids, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it's not where something go, like, later, it's, they're, they're isolated, yeah.
We're talking to tree size?
Sorry, what's up?
You're talking tree size?
No, do you have the depth of the water?
It's like Johnson, it's just a recommendation to our, to our building inspector, she'll decide, she'll decide what to do.
All right, thank you very much.
So, I think there was a motion, right, but there wasn't a vote.
I mean, a motion, you second it, or...
Yeah, that's to send it to the building inspector.
Right, the recommendation to the inspector.
Yep, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. The next item on the agenda here is Charles Scott.
I've got to go get my computer cord, I'm about to die.
You are, okay.
Yeah, give me one sec.
I'm trying to address the... The planning board is doing something.
If you want to remove trees, I think so.
It's a, it's a wooden...
Your house, just for some other property, or is it for the...
Find the long time. I know, I know.
I think there's a limb, there's something you can do. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Bill Povell, the engineer for the applicant, Charles Scott.
Oh, sorry. Dan has to get his power cord if you'll wait one minute. His computer's about to. It's in the law what that threshold is. I think there's just one or two trees. It's not a big, but if it's several.
It's a wooded lot.
Yeah. Might have to come in for a tree. All right.
You may say good night.
That sounds rude. There's a lot of bruised, a lot of damage.
Don't worry. I leave at 11 o'clock. I've had it.
Eleven?
Well, we better get moving.
We're going to the bar after this?
We're going to the bar.
I don't know.
I think there is.
All right, sir. Thank you for your patience.
Again, Bill Povell, engineer for the applicant, Charles Scott, here tonight with two properties that he owns off of Depot Hill Road. So if you're familiar with Depot Hill Road, you go across the rail trail and you start heading up the this is the rail trail. And this area here is where you cross. And then you start heading up the hill, which is actually south. So he owns approximately 22 acre parcel on the right side of the road. It slopes from the road down. And then he owns a 0.14 acre parcel, which I highlighted here in orange. And what he's looking to do is a lot line adjustment to push this line out into his existing 22 acre parcel, which would then make the front parcel here, 3.15 acres or 137,000 square feet to conform with the R35 zoning. So with this application, he's looking to make this existing lot bigger and to conform to the zoning. And right now, on the property, this is the highest point on the property and it fronts right on Depot Hill Road. And then his existing house is on the large lot, which is shown in the south portion of this small driveway up to Depot Hill Road. So we're simply looking to just do a lot line adjustment to make the smaller lot conforming with the zoning and more building.
So it's just a simple lot line adjustment?
Correct.
And it does. It takes an existing lot and makes it more in compliance.
So you're looking for us this evening to, Dan, deem it a type two?
Yes.
And if you have any other comments to add?
Yeah, I mean, this area has a lot of environmental constraints, steep slopes, intermittent streams. It's on the street road, so there's a requirement for 100 foot of continuous offer. So by the time you start taking all these things into considerations, even though it's, you know, a proposed three acre lot, your building envelope may may start to shrink. And then you end up having areas where it's limited. So their code calls for lot line realignments to be reviewed as subdivisions, which require provisions for the development.
Right.
So that's why my letter has a lot of the information that's in the subdivision code because that's that's how our code is written. Lot lines are specifically considered subdivisions in our town. So that's that's one thing. The other thing is that the the survey of the existing lot is not updated. There's a lot of extra building going on on that lot. And so there needs to be updated on the survey for bigger lots. So the the concept is always, you know.
All permitted, permitted building.
I have no idea. I don't know.
Can you speak to that?
This survey was prepared and then it was updated. And when it was updated, the survey are focused on the area where proposing the lot line adjustment.
Okay.
And he did build a big garage in the back. He got a building permit. The CO was granted, so it was done legally. And I think there's a chicken coop that's on there that's missing. But again, it's centralized in the lot. As far as I understand from him, everything he's done there, it's been driven through the building department.
Okay.
The gravel road that's, what was it, tuck and drive?
I'm not familiar with that.
Well, you show an existing driveway. Is there a name for it?
I I don't. I'm not aware of any. It's just a single driveway for his house. It's gravel. It's a gravel driveway.
So the plans have a lot of of information missing as per the subdivision code.
Per subdivision code, yeah.
What what do you need us to do tonight then?
Well, when we submitted the application, you know, we looked at this as just a lot line adjustment and.
You missed that piece about.
Yeah.
Subdivision requirements.
I understand. It's just that we're not proposing anything, so.
Oh, we can't waive that, though.
Okay.
We've never done that before, so.
All right. Now, the only thing I did see in Dan's letter is the whole D E C jurisdictional determination. And it was talked about earlier. I think it's a four month process to get that. And where we're proposing the lot line adjustment is on the top of the hill. It's over three, I think it was over 350 feet.
So you're saying there's no there's no wetlands?
There's no there's no wetlands on top. We proposed the the blue line that you see here. It's 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 a it's a slope down from Depot Hill Road, but it's all buildable. And then where we propose the lot line adjustment, which you see in blue here, at that point, it starts to go down steep towards his existing driveway.
All right.
So I I understand the comments and we'll get all that information together and we'll put it on the plan. I just was hoping not to be held up by the D E C determination.
I think there's an intermittent stream there, right?
Yeah.
There's a pond, you've checked. And and a pond?
There's there's a pond on his property here. And then if you look at the D E C map, the D C map, there's wetlands down along the rail trail down here. But that's like 350 feet downhill from where we're proposing our back property line.
And where's the intermittent stream?
The survey just shows a section of this is really a drainage ditch for the road, which is dry the majority of the time. And it comes down through here.
Yeah. Those are the contours.
Yeah, our N R I maps indicated as an intermittent stream, so it has to be treated as such, which means it has a buffer and all that. 155, 52 is our water course wetland protection ordinance, so.
Yeah, I think it gets confusing because we had an applicant come to us once and he kept telling us there wasn't a stream and there wasn't wetlands and there wasn't any trees. It was amazing. It was like the perfect developable spot. And then when we found out, we actually went out there and there was streams and there was wetlands and there was steep slopes. So we would hope that you're going to be as genuine with us in what's on the site and showing what's on the site.
Absolutely.
And not not try to manipulate. We've been manipulated in the past. It's not something the board enjoys. So was this, these are my comments. There's 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 also, I'm just looking at the aerial photo, and there appears to be a barn or some kind of big garage structure.
Yep, that's what I just spoke about.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry. I missed that. There's looks to be multiple structures. And.
Yes, he has a shed, he has a chicken coop.
Yeah, there's what appears to be a lot of piles of debris or something. I don't know what it is. And and then, yeah, I think for us to be able to make a decision on whether that lot would work, we'd need to understand. You're telling me also it's up on a hill, so there's steep slopes.
Right.
We do have a steep slopes law.
Right. And and like I said, we're we'll put all that information on the plan.
Yeah, we won't be we won't be waiving anything that Dan has put here as a comment if that's what you're looking for us to do.
All right. So then, because what I was hoping to do was show you that the topo have any wet area on site, you know, located by the surveyor. And when you see the topo and how this lot is, you'll understand pretty quickly that, you know, there wouldn't be any wet ones that would be impacted by the lot line. And I understand that that's a requirement, but as far as I understand, it's a requirement for me doing any kind of development. And we're simply just trying to change the lot line.
Well.
That's my only request. Everything else, you know, will show.
But you see, as he pointed out, you have to treat it as a subdivision. So it's not just, did I say that right, Dan?
Yeah, that's how our that's how our code defines a lot line realignment as a subdivision.
And 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 the elements that he put here for you are so that you can address that part of our code.
I have to show it because that's what this is. It's a subdivision.
Yeah.
So you go through the 130-12, 130-18, 130-20. And all of the all of the requirements in there are associated with lot line realignments as well. So that's that's where.
We just caused, you know, there's another, you know, item that was here before the public hearing to go through the same thing. You know, fire advisory board had to weigh in a location of the driveway, approximate location of the building, you know.
Right. I understand that that project when I was listening.
Because the purpose of you doing this is for the, you know, you're looking for another building lot here. I mean, at the end of the day, right? Because you wouldn't be here.
Technically, it's already it's a lot.
Not big enough, though. Yeah, it's just not. It's not big enough to build on, right? So once this decision is made, it will not be coming back before our board if you're going to build just a single family home on it. It'll go to the building department. So the whole point of this portion of our code is so that we can weigh in before a permit is pulled. And then there will be a public hearing, right? And the neighbors will have the opportunity to address. Yeah, the the neighbors will have an opportunity to address the the issues like what the neighbor here came to talk about. So you understand?
No, I understand.
Okay.
I just simply asked the one question regarding the the wetlands, given the makeup of the property and just knowing, you know, we're going to be delayed now four more months.
So Dan, if you could.
Because I've already, you know, like Dan talked about earlier.
Let me let Dan speak about why that's important.
I I get it.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I do now.
Thank you.
You explain it to me, which is part of the subdivision code.
I just have one other question for you. Was this the area? It's it's fronts on the rail the trail?
The the back of the existing parcel where his house is now is the is right against the rail trail.
Right. Is that the location where the pathway, I don't know if you know this, the pathway had failed on the rail the trail? Is that the area where it failed?
Yeah, that I don't know. I can ask. I can ask.
Where the, yeah, it got it got completely washed out. I'm pretty sure.
Right now, that's that is it.
And it was coming, the water was coming from this from the direction of this property and it completely washed out the trailway, knocked out the trail for like six months or a year or something like that. You're not you're not aware of that? Well, that's fine. I don't expect you to know. Yeah. When you look on the aerial, it definitely looks like that's right adjacent to this property. Yeah, you can see the asphalt there, the brand new ground that's fixed and all the ripper out of it. Right here.
And you showed me that.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, his driver's way over here.
Yeah, well, I was just interested to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll go back and do my homework.
Thank you very much. You have a good night.
All right.
So we didn't deem it type two, did we?
No.
This was just a discussion, right?
Yeah, I mean, we could save that for the next.
Yeah, I don't think there's any reason.
Let's see. Let's get better information if we make that decision.
The, all right, Veros, I should be able to pronounce that. Verosini. Oof, I butchered it. I apologize. Yeah, my tongue's getting tight.
Good evening. Mike Burda, architect for the applicant.
Good evening. Thank you.
So what we have is a existing single family house that's owned by the parents. And they are looking to the kids are going to be buying a house and then building an apartment for the for the parents. So the apartment's going to be located in the rear of the house, so you will not see it from the road. We meet the requirement of less than 35 percent. We're actually, we can't even build this big because it's 800 square foot maximum underneath the 800 square feet. There's a shared utility area between the two. And it's actually going to connect the apartment into the house as well. We are currently in the process right now with the health department, getting a new septic system designed. Deep tests have been done. First round of comments have been reviewed and resubmitted. And we're just waiting for any additional comments. We anticipate the engineer anticipates approval sometime in the middle of July. So the site itself, the way we're building, the addition, there'll be there'll be virtually no grading because it's a very level lot. So we're no basement slab on grade. The existing house is also slab on grade. So.
So it's just an extension of the house?
Just an extension. Right behind the existing garage.
Proposed one story bedroom. Two story frame house. Oh, is this the parking? You can't get to the parking spot, Dan?
Yeah. Yeah, I saw Dan's comment. We're.
Oh, okay.
We're we're going to remove that and just keep the existing parking that's there.
Okay.
But they were trying to do this because the parents are getting older. Is this something a little closer? But I understand Dan's comment.
Yeah, I think backing out of there is really difficult.
Yeah.
Especially if you're trying to use those other spots there.
Well, there's the parents have one car. So that was what the thought process was. I understand that Ford required, but.
You're trying to get them closer to the door so they don't have to walk that far.
Right.
That's important sometimes. You don't have a way of doing it? You don't have enough space?
Well, what it is, is right now, there's the existing hammer on the driveway. And that if we, in order to put this space in, we're going to really lose that. We're going to lose one of the spots in the hammer.
Okay.
Actually, it's large enough that we can almost get three cars in there. But we're going to we're going to be left with like one car that could be parking in there. Might be a little tight. But if we were to keep it, we could actually, you know, they could park two cars in front of the garage bays. I mean, it's a large driveway.
Yeah.
There are other options, but I understood Dan's point.
I mean, it makes it makes it a lot easier for people to get out of their car onto the sidewalk at that higher elevation, too, even if you get close to the.
I want to talk to them. We might explore other options. Problem is, is that we're I'm going to check the coverages. Because Dan, you know, he's got a different number than I came up with. But we're very close on lot coverage.
Get the impervious coverage.
Okay.
Speaking of which, question on that, there's no definition in the code on what considered impervious. Speaking of which, question on that, there's no definition in the code on what considered impervious. Gravel? Not compacted item four. I'm talking about just gravel.
I can look for a definition for you.
I tried. You know it better than I do.
I, I recently learned that grass isn't that impervious in comparison to, yeah, you taught me that. I, I mean, it's more impervious than pavement, but it's not that impervious.
Amazing.
A lot of water runs on it.
That's what they say about the gravel driveways too. People say, oh, we'll do gravel, it's more pervious.
DEP doesn't consider, DEP doesn't consider gravel.
So what the world is. No, neither does DEC for stormwater purposes, and a gravel driveway is basically still impervious.
A lot of times the drivers, they wind up using an item four gravel which compacts almost the concrete.
Yeah.
You know, it's, if you're using like a loose like pea gravel or, you know, some sort of stone like that that's loose, it doesn't compact. They drink, actually drink better than grass.
Right.
Yep.
Maybe some of the bigger, right, river rocks and things are... Are you anticipating any variances for this?
No. No. We meet all setback requirements. Yeah, we, we meet all the requirements of the, of the bullcraigs. We're going to check the impervious, that's the only one that's in question, but no matter what, we're not looking, we're not looking to obtain variances. We'll start pulling things away if we have to, like, there's a depth on there that it's right on grade. You know, we can get rid of it.
Dan, have you checked the percentages? Like, I know when, an apartment's not supposed to exceed a quarter of the volume of the house.
Yeah, there's a...
Thirty-five percent.
It's thirty-five percent, yeah, so, and the...
Thirty-five percent?
Thirty-five percent.
Yeah.
Eight hundred square foot maximum.
Alright, so you checked it, Mike?
And, I mean...
I learned that one harder than the last one.
Oh. I mean, just to keep this in the right frame of mind, this is for the parents of the people that own the home, so I think keeping it as convenient as possible for them to enter and exit the home is really, should focus our attention, you know.
As much as I agree with you, but the problem is, in order to do that, we may wind up exceeding, again, I'm going to check it. I think we're under right now, but I'm going to check it. If we are, then we'll have to, you know, we'll have to deal with it, but the variance right now is not in there.
Oh, I see. That's too bad, yeah. But you're that close.
There's, there's nothing saying that after this project is done, then we'll come back and ask for it.
Right.
After, you know, after this is done.
Oh, okay.
They're under two, they're under a couple of time constraints, one of them being...
Age?
No, well, that's...
I'm under that constraint.
We're not going to talk about that.
I'm there too.
The, the time constraint is one, selling their house that they're living in currently, and two, moving the kids into this district. They're coming from outside.
Okay.
So you want your definition or no?
Yeah.
Alright, impervious cover, those surfaces, improvements, and structures that cannot effectively infiltrate rainfall, snow, melt, and water, e.g. building, rooftops, pavement, sidewalks, driveways, etc.
Okay. The judge has specified what impervious is. I mean, gravel and...
Cannot effectively infiltrate rainfall.
Alright, so technically then gravel is not considered impervious?
Well, DEC, DEC considers it impervious.
Okay, it doesn't tend to be.
When we're reviewing SWIP, yes.
Okay, no SWIP.
It's true.
Hey, I'm looking for loopholes.
I don't know. Get yourself a lawyer, I guess.
What's the gravel for? Where are you proposing?
I hear there's one in the back.
There is one in the back, that's why I just wanted to look.
Were you proposing the gravel, Mike?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm asking. Look, if we're, my, my point, my thought is either that if the driveway itself wound up being, you know, the little hammer for the, for the apartment, the closest parking, if it wound up, if it definitely did, I mean, I ran Hollyline, so I'm pretty confident on the number. But, whatever reason that we did, that did send us over the impervious number, over the 15 percent, if we convert that into a loose gravel, that would be considered impervious or not. And if not, then we could take that, that area out of the calculation. Yeah, my other option is...
Maybe do perp, perpious, you know, pavers and something like that.
My, well, I was going to say, my other option is just running down a strip of, you know, perpious paper and then just grassing it, just run the strip where they're going to park the car, the tires. So, yeah, I've got other options.
Yeah, I didn't look at that as a showstopper, I mean...
No, nothing, nothing of this is a showstopper.
Worst case, you can go to the zoning board of appeals as well, so.
There's other options, there's other options.
So, did you want to, did you want to grant such?
Yeah, I'm ready for that.
Yeah, okay. Can I have a motion to grant sketch, please?
So, so moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay. And then what was the other item on the comment?
Deem the application type two in accordance with 617.5 C11.
Okay. I'll make a motion to deem the application type two. Okay. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, I do have one thing though I have to talk about.
Please.
Given the fact that last, the playboy was pushed back one week due to the Juneteenth holiday.
Oh, right.
Which, you know, is great, but really has afforded my client a misfortune. Because the deadline for any, any updates is Monday.
Oh.
So, instead of every other, every other month where you get, you know, full eight days to turn your timer around, we're four to three.
I'll defer to Dan, yeah, since...
So are you asking for a...
I was hoping that we could get at least until...
The, the short answer is that the planning secretary who, this issue came up today actually, there's, there's a schedule for when you have to submit, and the schedule's been out since December or January, so.
Ernie's under the same gun.
It's not really negotiable.
Yeah.
So...
I have no say in this.
Okay.
It's code, and it's code, and then we also establish the dates.
Let me answer this. I mean, other than, there's, there's a couple items there that I don't think they'll be able to get, which would be the information on the easement that you want for the, that, because that's the surveyor's obviously got to get. And you get the well pump tested, because I don't think I can get that done on Monday. So you were asking for an engineer to certify water supply. So if we can get the rest of, but the rest of the, the rest of the thing is relatively minor, in the grand scheme of things. So if we can get that in, can we get the public hearing except for June, for July? The reason why I'm hoping is, you know, we're, again, like I said, they're trying to move their kids into this name, into development, or trying to, trying to get it done as quick as...
Dan's doing some calculations in this.
Yeah, I mean, I think the big thing is, is that when we get into the public hearing stage, we want to be able to make sure that when it's closed, you're ready for preliminary. And in cases where it's not a type two, that you're ready for seeker as well.
Yeah.
That's, that's been a crux that this board has had to deal with many times, and it leads to continued public hearings that become onerous.
Mike, they, they want to have this, they want to have their kids in the school by September?
No, 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 well, I mean, they'll, they'll cram into, they'll cram in, but they want to make sure that they can get this thing. You know, if August, you were telling me, we're talking about possibly a September meeting getting approval, we're starting to run into cold weather. That's it. We're just trying to get it started, get it closed in.
Well, if, if you have the extra time to submit for August, you could, for the public hearing in August, they could set a public hearing for August and anticipate that as long as you've got most of this in order, they can do a conditional final approval then too, preliminary and conditional final.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm not sure if you're going to get it next month if you have a public hearing, if this is still outstanding.
Like I said, most of the items, most of the items other than the, the information on easement as well as the, the well test, those are the only two rooms that I'd see as a...
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily need to be a well test. It needs to be an attestation from a professional engineer that the water supply is...
I haven't found one yet that will, that will just certify anything like that. At least not in a long time.
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, there's lots of ways to look at it, I guess.
But still, even, even by Monday, that's just going to be March 5.
Right.
Alright. Alright, then we'll, I guess it'll be August. I mean, you look, I mean, you look like you're going to fall.
It's either one meeting in August if you do all this, or two meetings anyway.
As long as we get approval.
I don't know.
If we get approval in August, then that's fine. If we get everything, you know, it gives us more than enough ample time to get everything on the list buttoned up.
So do you want to just come back in July just to make sure we're moving along and then have the meeting in August? And then we can vote for the hearing in August? What would you like?
That would be okay with me.
I think your, your biggest issue would be if you couldn't get under the impervious coverage, because then we'd have to make a referral to ZBA or you'd have to figure it out. You know, you could probably cut some of those existing parking spaces that are extra out.
Yeah, yeah, look, worst case is the deck goes by bugs, because it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's one step to breed. You know, I mean, basically it's right on grade.
That, that deck is, you're saying that the deck is elevated?
Yeah.
Is it, is it dirt underneath?
Um, yeah.
That's pervious.
Yeah, there's slats between...
That's pervious.
The deck boards so that the water just drips down, yeah. I would say that's pervious.
To consider?
That's 100 square feet.
That's pervious.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah.
So.
I, I didn't realize if it was a, a lifted deck.
Well, he said, he said shingles.
Alright.
He said shingles.
It's not, it's not with a roof with a gutter, right? It's open desk?
Open deck.
Yeah.
Open deck, pressure trigger there with, you know, with an eighth inch gap between the boards.
Yeah, there's dirt under there. I see that's, I see that that's pervious.
Okay. Alright, so I can get most of this in, so let's keep this on for July and we'll set a public hearing for then.
Sounds great.
So you, you're saying you want to come back in July to set the August meet?
Yeah, because I want to make sure that we have other than, other than the two things that I know I can't get by Monday, which would be the well test and that. That'll give me time to get them, but this way, if I've missed anything, I'll get another review and be able to make sure that I have it buttoned up by August.
Perfect. Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you. See you next month.
Have a good night. Okay. Great enlightenment for us Institute Society USA. Uh, yes, please, thank you. Thank you. No, no matter. Okay. That is so funny.
Yeah.
She is like glue. Mores together out there. And there's, she's a rock. Where I know everything, everything. Acidic, it's getting...
We were here before.
Twenty-two ten and twenty-two ten.
How, how long has Colleen been?
Somehow I... Yeah, somehow I... If you wrote that down, it's twenty-two ten.
I'm just curious how long she's been with us.
I put twenty-one, but I'm still at nine.
I assume forever. I assume forever, because she knows.
No, no. I don't know how long she's been. I haven't filled her.
Dan, how long has Colleen been with us? See, Stan won.
Wow.
See, he's Stan 2.0. He's Stan 2.0.
It's true. Twenty thirteen.
Remember he left for a while and then he came to the hyenas?
Good evening, my name is Devora. I am representing our client and Lyska McCormick Bembore's Architects. We're seeking initial feedback for a change of use and a specially used permit to convert a set of residential, residential parcels in R45 to a religious retreat center. The site includes about 200 acres and nine existing buildings which will all remain. We're not proposing any changes in size, just use. Minimal interior renovations will be needed for some ADA compliance, but beyond that, the center will support religious, educational, and wellness programs, including meditation, community outreach, and mindfulness classes. We just wanted to hear some feedback before we actually submitted our application.
I think that the, the town could use it, and I think some of the politicians should maybe consider, you know, going. I think it would be great.
I agree.
I mean, mindfulness, yeah, meditation and wholesome thoughts. Wonderful. I could use it now.
Me too.
Me too. So, Dan, is there anything we need to consider?
Well, I mean, so this is a pre-application, so I, we don't, we don't do a review on these beforehand. I, I heard you say ADA compliance, that would be top of my list for making sure that there's a conversion from residential to, you know, commercial. I mean, are they bringing people in? Are they bringing people in from outside, or?
I think so, yeah.
You know, are these people that are going to live there?
Temporarily, not. It's just as, they're there to learn about the religion, be mindful and practice the teachings. And then I think it's more transient in nature than anything else, some guest lecturers. There's a few houses on the property. I think those would be used to house those guest lecturers.
Like a retreat.
Exactly.
So, I mean, I think that's why ADA is really important for that, because, you know, some of these buildings, to access them, you know, so talking from parking spaces to accessible pathways to the front door, making sure that there's good accessibility is important. You know, all the normal type of site plan things, of course, lighting, lighting for safety as well, where residential might not have sufficient lighting for pathways. Are there going to be, you know, interconnections with pathways between all the buildings, you think, that are going to be added on, or?
Not that will be added on. There is currently quite a well-established network of driveways. But I don't, I definitely think lighting would be helpful, but I don't think there will be additional walking pathways.
Okay.
How big, how big are the existing structures?
That was Eddie Murphy's place.
Oh, I can see that from my house.
Right.
Yeah, in the backyard.
The old Eddie Murphy property.
I, I, you know what? The, the elevation is perfect for a zip line from my house to that location.
This is perfect for you. You zip in, do meditation, and then zip off.
Please. I, I, you have no idea how often I zip right in.
We put that, we put them on heaven.
Which side of Hines Road?
So it's actually both sides. I apologize if I didn't bring an eagle. It's seven properties, so Hines Road is right there. The larger portion of it is, I think this is, this is north, so the larger portion of it's the east side of Hines Road, and then there are two parcels on the other side.
So how does that work?
R45, you know, it becomes...
There's a lot common there too.
Yeah, right on the lake.
We did that.
Oh, they built that. Still learning.
I've been inside, it's great.
What's that?
I've been inside, it's great.
We built that many years ago.
So how many buildings would you be building?
No, no, we're not adding any buildings. We're reusing whatever buildings are on the property. I think it's a total of nine.
I see.
So just converting them into spaces that would support this program.
Now, what, hey Craig, so religious community, religious, what would be the right word?
Retreat?
Retreat is an R45?
With a special use permit.
I don't know, it depends on where the location of property is.
And is it a religion?
Yes.
It is, yeah.
What's, what's going to be put there? Is it like yurts?
Nothing's going to be added. It will just be reusing existing structures.
Using the existing mansion that's there.
And the barn, and the house on the lake, and the stables. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of buildings there.
There's dwellings with the stables too, isn't there?
So one of the stables buildings is still a stable, and the other one has been converted to apartments.
Would you have to increase parking? What are your anticipated parking needs?
Not great. We are expecting like, not shuttle service, but almost like everyone coming in in a group and then walking around the property and then leaving as a group. There is quite a bit parking already, but if that is a concern, we could definitely take a look at that.
It's always good to kind of show that, you know, I was thinking about what makes it easier for the board. I mean, it is a specially permitted use, by the way, in R45, so it's site plan and special use permit. There's a really in-depth narrative, always, always very helpful, because then, especially with a use that's not... because then, especially with a use that's not fast food restaurant.
Not typical.
It's just, this isn't the, the normal. So, if we get a, you know, concept of how many workers, how many people are expected to be there in and out, you know, adequacy, adequacy of the sewage disposal and water supply. Does it have to be upgraded to a public water supply? You know, or you go over the threshold that requires it to be like a transient, non-community, public water supply? Things like that are, are all really going to be important for this type of review. So, a narrative is always really helpful, just to kind of understand the processes and what's going to happen on the site.
Then we have to...
Hours of operation are always really important.
What the potential occupancy is.
The traffic, buses?
That's part of the narrative, I think. Like, if, you know, if you're expecting, uh, you know, 8,000 guests in a day, then yeah, I think, you know, we need to expect traffic impacts. But I mean, if, if they're gonna, if they're gonna basically tell us that they're gonna bus in, you know, 30 people in one day.
Because there will be a public hearing.
One bus on the road.
There'll be a public hearing.
I don't know. It's just, you know, that's why the narrative is helpful.
Those are good questions. Because there will be a public hearing, right?
Absolutely.
So, just to, uh, be able to answer all of the questions that may, may come up.
According to the neighbor, there is. That came up on the... Pool.
Do you know if there's buses going in and out of there now?
I don't think so. I think there are passenger vehicles there. Like, when I was there, I drove my car, I met the client up there and a few other people, but, and I didn't see any buses.
Somebody may have mentioned that there were buses.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
So, there is, there, there is on the website instructions for a specially used permit, right, Dan? That...
Yeah, so, I mean, you're, you're gonna follow 15559 and 15560. That's our site plan and our special use permit code. And then if there's any, you know, without having much site disturbance, it might not be applicable, but we do have steep slopes ordinance. That's 15553, I think. And then you have wetlands, water body, water course protection, 15552. If you're gonna have landscaping, there's maintenance requirements on 15547.
And if we're not proposing changes to any of that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, um, you know, in a normal world, we would be referring this possibly, depending on where it lies to any state, county entities. You know, we would be sending it to the county planning department as well, under the 239 referral. And if that does happen, I mean, there's always landscaping and lighting required by them. Our code definitely calls for in-site plans landscaping, so there's, there's probably, there's, there's some people here that really love trees and shrubs. And, uh, you know, it would probably behoove you to, you know, to consider some of that if, if it's not already. Because I, I think that the property has a lot of beautiful trees and stuff right now.
It is beautiful, yeah.
I've never fully toured it, but I've seen it from, from the road, so.
It's very well covered with trees.
I think so.
The, the house itself has a beautiful landscaping that I'm sure you would expect.
It, it might be helpful then to have all that on survey for the base mapping, because then, particularly with, um, you know, sizes and species as well, because then the board can look at that, it's existing landscaping.
So, it's a special use permit. But I understand you're not changing much, but the more information you give us, the faster it will go through the process and reach public hearing.
Okay.
Do you think we need to do anything with, you know, lot line consolidations or anything? Or do we keep them separate?
Septic is not going to be affected, right? Water consumption in Septic?
I don't know. We can find out. We are, again, just starting this process, so we'll look into that.
Those numbers, yeah. Dan will put a comment letter together.
Are they, are they all common ownership now?
They are all owned by the same entity.
I'm thinking yes. Five years worth of...
The site plan would cover all of the parcels individually. Is there any reason why?
You'll have to forgive us, but, you know, we're really looking forward to this.
Listen, it's a...
As a community, we really need it.
That's good. Hopefully, it'll make my job easier.
Yeah, that's true. So, uh, do you have any more questions for us?
I don't have any more questions, but I think they're still debating if it should be one lot.
Yeah, I know. I was wondering.
If it should be one what?
One lot.
Because otherwise, the site plan will have to be each lot by itself.
Yeah, it's like, you know, how would you, do you, do you do a site plan compliance, bulk regulations review?
I remember.
Of, um, of each individual lot at that point? You know? Or do you, do you look at it as a whole? But if you look at it as a whole, shouldn't it be one parcel? I, I don't know. It's, it's something I think, you know, our legal ego will need to take a look at, but...
Well, we can let that stew on your end, but I'm also gonna have to run that by the client. There may be reason why they want to keep it separate, so I can definitely find out, and then we can touch base the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm just spitballing it, because I haven't thought about it much until...
Yeah, I don't want to go through each one like seven times.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Good to see you again. And I mean that. Ernie, what did I say? What did I say? Didn't I?
You did.
I did. What's that? I think, would they're asking...
Would you indulge her?
Oh, would we indulge you? Dan, can we indulge her? Great, yeah.
Make it quick.
I know. You were here. It's a very long meeting. I can't believe you go so late.
Right.
Victoria Polidoro, Roden Hasen, Charles Polidoro, Ernie Martin. We're here for Green Hill subdivision. At the last meeting in May, um, I watched the meeting. There was a lot of discussion about conservation easement versus deed restriction. And I've had some conversations with your attorney, and we just wanted to make sure that we are on the right track. Because, you know, the applicant's very eager to move this project forward. We've proposed language for a deed restriction, which would say that the property shall not be further subdivided, but that nothing herein will prohibit or restrict lot line alteration as long as it doesn't make it non-conforming. So, you know, someone wants to put a pool in or put in a shed, that would be fine. And so, uh, the idea is that this will be printed on a subdivision plot, and all of those things cost money. So, we were hoping, uh, two things tonight. One, that we would get your agreement that this is the right way to proceed with this application. And then, second, I guess there was some confusion. It appeared you were ready to vote at the last meeting, but for this issue. But then something came up yesterday that said you were waiting on a new submission. And so, we're, we're trying to get clarity on that and also to see if you'd be willing to grant preliminary, so we can go ahead and address all those conditions and reprint these plans.
Hey, Dan, uh, well, Craig, you weren't here. We, we had, uh, you know, the language regarding deed restrictions versus...
I wasn't here in May. I wasn't here in April.
I, I meant earlier in the day, earlier this evening. Dan, what was the, uh...
Was that clove?
Yeah, it was clove, right? And we talked about with the other conflict attorney. Yeah, what was the language you used regarding?
I think you said deed restriction.
Covenant, that's the law. It's the same thing, yeah.
It's, it's the same thing. I mean, honestly, I heard you guys talking earlier. Conservation easements are required to be held by a third party. And in this county, it's really hard to find a conservation organization that will take these little itsy-bitsy pieces. They're more interested in very large holdings that can be open to the public. So, these sorts of things are not inappropriate for conservation easements, just unless the town wants to take them, and they don't.
Well, no, I appreciate the explanation. Thank you for clearing it up.
So, a covenant would be more...
Yeah, so, so we're proposing a covenant, um, on subdivision, which I believe is what the restriction is. If you want to put a shed in, that's not a problem, as long as they comply with, you know, the, the wetlands buffers and all of those things.
But you were saying doesn't, won't preclude a lot line realignment?
What we've proposed, so let's say lots two and three, both of which exceed the minimum lot size. They wanted to move it five feet one direction. This, the way I've drafted it would not preclude that. They could move their lot lines, but they could not create a new lot.
Because somebody might need it for a pool or a shed.
A pool, a shed. You never know what comes up.
Yeah, but that may defeat the purpose of why we wanted to protect that area, because, um, we didn't want them to further develop that big lot. And if we're allowing this caveat where a couple of those lots can change their lot line, presumably, they can push it into a large area. Can we put limits?
Yeah, Rob, that, that's not, there's no structure, additional structure that is being proposed, I think, right? I mean...
It wouldn't allow for any new structures other than what could already be allowed. This would just say if two neighbors needed to move something slightly in order to avoid a variance for a porch or something like that.
You did mention a pool.
A pool, a porch, you know, those sorts of things.
Like an in-ground pool? What I'm getting at is this, would you change it from a one-acre lot to a two-acre lot, according to this language, so you could put an in-the-ground pool on the additional acre?
I mean, theoretically, yes, but I don't think that could happen, because lots one through six are all 1.4, 1.2.
The idea, my understanding at the last meeting, the board was very concerned and was a lot of discussion about this, is they didn't want additional lots.
Well, it was to protect view shed and the natural resources. We, we wanted you to protect that one large area that was left over. Where it was an 8.9-inch lot or something like that?
Yep, 8.98.
Yeah, so that, the benefit of protecting that is that it's one large, continuous, open space.
It, it would stay one large slot.
Put a covenant on that one lot.
That's what we did. That's, what they're suggesting is changing what we discussed, which is...
I, I put the restriction on every lot. So, this is why I wanted to talk to you. So, thank you for letting us have this conversation.
Are you, are you suggesting a minor lot line?
No, no, we, right now, as it stands, what we've proposed was that no further subdivision of any of the seven lots, except that, you know, if two or three or four, you know, they wanted to do a little lot line alteration, we would allow that. But we're not talking about creating any new lots. So, there'd be no new development potential.
So, I get that. I'm not disputing. I'm not, I'm not worried that you're creating new lots. I'm worried that you're, you're, you're disrupting the, the spirit of what we were trying to achieve, which is to protect that large of...
Having a lot realignment with lots number two and three is not going to affect the big one.
All right, so let me put it in terms of this way. We made an agreement right at that meeting. We're gonna close the public hearing based on this. And this sounds like you're adjusting what we agreed on.
Well, I don't think so. I think I'm actually, I think we're saying the same thing.
Clarifying. One thing I just want to ask is, like, is lot one, as long as lot one is untouched, that's what I'm thinking, I'm hearing Rob say.
That's the big one?
That's the big one.
That's the big one. And you, you would do, you would limit the lot line alterations to minor alterations between those buildable lots that, you know, you're creating? I think that that is within the spirit and intent of what the board was looking for.
Because those are the clustered homes.
I mean, I mean, lots, lots... Lots two, uh, three, four, five, six, and seven, unless our zoning ever changes and we get central water and central sewer through here, can't be subdivided again anyway. Right? Lot two, lot two can't be subdivided again, because, unless the DPC wetlands evaporate. I mean... It might, I don't know, but I mean...
Right, member Lo Pain, there, there's wetlands on the property, which already would prohibit any kind of more intensive development without, you know, serious permitting.
Sometimes we make quick decisions, and then we, and then we regret them. So, the, we had a very deep and comprehensive discussion at the last meeting, and I thought we were all settled.
Could you show me, uh...
Well, I watched the discussion, um, and I wrote this in the spirit of that discussion.
All right, so... I don't know if I ever shared that with the board, you know, the resolution that you were talking about?
Yeah, it wasn't shared? Okay.
I appreciate you're taking what we, what we discussed, and you're, you're going the next step, you're starting to formulate the agreement. And how would that look?
So, let, let me just ask this. There has to be a reason why you want this flexibility. Is, could you tell me what it is?
Absolutely. Right now, it's, it's lots, and so as the lots start to get sold to individual homeowners, you know, one person wants a modern farmhouse, and another person has a different vision. And once these are sold to different people, that vision gets boxed in by the existing lot lines. And so, it was just a way to offer some flexibility in the future. If it's, I mean, if it's a sticking point, we can always send someone for a variance.
But if that's, if, if, if the wording is such that we're talking about lot number one not having a covenant, and not a covenant on the rest of the lots, what difference does it make? They could always do a lot realignment between themselves.
Oh, I had put the restriction on all the lots, saying no further subdivision.
Yeah, so here's where I think, in the light of what Fay was saying, is our big concern was making sure that lot one doesn't ever get developed again. I didn't, you know, if lot four and five want to exchange or move their lot line, that's not going to affect the spirit of it. I, I thought we were only getting a covenant on lot one.
That's what I thought.
Did we talk about getting a covenant on all of them?
No.
Okay.
And it doesn't prohibit, a covenant on lot one does not prohibit the other lots from doing lot realignment.
So, let me just play devil's advocate for a moment. If the owner of lot one, who actually owns the subdivision, wants to buy another lot and merge it into his lot, that would no longer be allowed, unless we say you can...
He wants to make a bigger lot?
Let's say down the road, he decided he didn't want to sell one of the lots, wants to keep it for his view. He wouldn't be allowed to merge them, because it's too restrictive.
My thinking was that, exactly what Rob said, but that lot two didn't need to be as large as it currently is for merging.
This is not fair to us.
Does that make sense?
Okay, so, I, so you're only looking for a restriction on the one lot and not on the whole property?
I'm looking for two to be reduced.
Wait, wait, we're not, we weren't changing any sizes.
Oh.
Right, this was, this was the exact same...
Do you use the map?
Ernie has it.
Yeah.
Because you closed the public hearing on this, so the, the lot lines haven't changed.
Right.
It's just...
Yeah, my, my mind is probably forgetting all the details.
I don't know how you guys stay. This is late.
And the idea with lot one is eight, is almost nine acres, right? What was the other big lot? Lot two is...
It was two. Two was how many?
Can we click this? I don't remember what you're...
Too, too funny, because it needs the access from the road.
Right.
This was a lot down here, and then the former owner merged this back into the park. Okay. So, then meantime, the code changed. So, now you need a hundred foot on the road.
Right.
So, what we had to do, we had to jerrymann the back of the slot to meet that requirement.
It's fine. I, I understood all that. It's just, we, you, you think we agreed to putting in covenant over all the lots that would limit the ability of not developing any...
No, I didn't mean to suggest that at all.
I know. I thought we just discussed... All right, remember when I drew that?
So, a no further subdivision on the larger lot.
I guess I, I'm, you didn't understand...
I didn't understand if that was...
I didn't understand if that was...
Because I'm not an architect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I didn't mean to direct you. My suggestion would be, uh, just, just put the covenant on lot number one, and then...
That was bad communication, yeah.
That would satisfy your concern about the ability to modify the other lot.
I mean, I still think lot one might want to change lot lines in the future, but if that's what it is, that's fine. And again, we're just talking about no further subdivision restriction. They can still build in accordance with...
I can see how that can happen. If we're making a covenant on an area that we've configured, and you're saying in the future, that area can be reconfigured, wouldn't that extinguish the covenant? Why don't we do this? Let's adjourn the meeting right now, all right, and then, uh, to clarify, we'll stay with you a few more, some more minutes.
Okay, but we'd like, I mean, our, our client was very upset that you couldn't get on tonight's agenda for, for approval, so I just want to be clear what, what is needed in order to...
I think what we talked about last month, maybe doing seeker this month, is what we talked about.
Right, the month is here.
And the code says submit seventeen days prior. We have a schedule of seventeen days prior.
Been submitted.
So, you know, you guys are working on this, and that's fine.
Wait, but Dan, there's no new information needed for seeker. You have it all. That, that's our point. We didn't think that new submission was needed, because you have it.
I mean, to, to, you have to ask to be on the meeting. Unless it's, uh, you know, continuation of a public hearing.
The biggest communication error here is...
That's the standard.
The, the entire spirit of what we were trying to do is missed, and, and, and we're going to come over there, we're going to talk to you about it. I just want to be able to let them go home.
So, can, can we ask to be on the next agenda right now, so I don't have to submit a letter?
In writing. You have to do it in writing. Send it to Cal. You have to, that, that's the procedure, guys. I, I don't want to tell you, other than the fact that there's, you know...
No, no, it's fine. You know, every board does it different. When Dan comes before my boards, we, we extend a different courtesy to him, but that's all right.
Hey, Rob, I vote to adjourn. Yeah, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Say? Say up? All right.
All right.
Meeting's adjourned.
I guess it's three...